Good evening. It is five thirty PM on Wednesday, May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. And this regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in council chambers at a city hall, eleven twenty-three West Lake Street in Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I'm Mayor Shelby Ronstadt, presiding. Also present are counselors Kate McAllister, Deb Rule, Joel Espiro. Is not here yet. He'll be here in a few moments. Apparently Andy Groat, Jason Welker and Justin Dick are also present. If everyone will please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Are there any announcements from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Two, one, I'd like to say thanks to the street crews. They did a great job with. Restriping and painting. That is an incredibly challenging job. I was, I seem to have followed them all throughout the day. They did. They did great. It's it's tough and as an awareness boy or sorry division over by the high school. It's a little different. I did think I drove in the multi-use part rather than the vehicle part for a little while. So just pay attention to that. And I wanted to say thank you for the presenters over at Travers Park. The the attendance was great. I got to play. In that wonderful park with my granddaughter and my daughter, and I look forward to hearing more from them. So and thank you for the community for participating. So. It, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right. Any other announcements from council?
I'll make a quick announcement. I'd just like to congratulate the leadership Sandpoint group on a really great fundraiser in very, very horrible conditions that we could go Friday. That day was like forty-five degrees and pouring rain. Despite that, we pulled off a street party on Main Street in front of one, one, three main. And raise quite a lot of money for UCAN, who I see Kelly in the audience tonight. So you unique center for athletes of all needs. It was a really successful event. And thanks to Kate for her leadership of the leadership Sandpoint group this year. I was a, I am a member of this year's class. So it was a really. Successful and fun and very wet and cold fundraising event.
Yeah.
And Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to echo those same comments as well, too. I just want to say how great it was the year before doing that. It rained and was just as cold and everybody spread out and went home or went into the businesses. This group stayed there for hours. The youth that was out there, the participation that was out there was absolutely amazing and all for a good cause as well, too. I'd also like to bring up a few other things as we go into the weekend here and we are celebrating, I believe, our thirty-seventh lost in the fifties in this community. It takes a lot of great people in this community, volunteers, the city staff permitting. Roadwork and people from outside our community that come in here. Carolyn Gleason has worked her tail off to make sure that this happens. And I'd like to remind everybody why this event happened and why we came in is because it was so, it is so slow in this town in the spring. And this brings in, this has brought in millions and millions of dollars to our community, to our restaurants, to our small businesses. And furthermore, people that find our community and end up moving here and enjoying our community as much as we have, as much as we all do. I would like to say if you do have an opportunity, every year this gets a little more expensive. Donors have passed away. We want to thank them for their past participation. But. If you have anything from fifty cents to a dollar to five dollars, twenty dollars to a hundred dollars, please go to Second Avenue. And make sure you show Carolyn and her people a little bit of support for putting this on for as long as they have with the money that it's brought into our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any others from council? Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, I would just like to give kudos to our staff member Maeve. For putting on a great disability and playground. Course yesterday and bringing Jill here who travels around the world doing this. We were super fortunate. I, as a physical therapist, even learned a couple of things. And then I had multiple people from our community come up and just. Were so excited about the presentation and the rest of that day that I'd just like to congratulate Maeve on a great success with that.
Excellent. All right, hearing no others, any announcements from staff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have my list today.
Okay.
It is special event season and it starts off really this weekend as Counselor Dick. Reference Lost in the Fifties is Friday and Saturday downtown. This weekend we're finishing the permitting for that event. Because this is going to be one of those few and rare nice weather years for Lost in the Fifties, especially for Friday night. We may see a bigger turnout than what we've seen in many years there. So yesterday we were working through. What where there may need to be additional show parking in downtown. So we will be releasing a map. It'll be up on our website tomorrow. So typically the event is on. Fourth, and we don't have to go all the way down to church. It will be down to church this year. To accommodate the number of vehicles participating, and they will also be showing vehicles this year and about a third of our downtown parking lots. So. We have a map that will be going up tomorrow, reminding people where other parking. Locations are throughout town, the ITD lots on the other side of Fifth Avenue and. Good thing we're a walking biking town because people might have to walk and bike from outside of the downtown core to get in. This weekend, both Friday and Saturday. Lost in the fir trees, disc golf tournament will be taking place on Saturday as well, and that will be. Up at the city sewer utility property where we have a disc golf course currently up on Baldi. The high school will be having their regional lacrosse tournament that will be on Friday and Saturday, and they're going to be down at War Memorial Field as well as. Across the sports complex. So they'll be at Centennial. They'll be at Great Northern. For that, and they will be sharing the field on Saturday with Sandpoint Affordable Football League staff. They're having a seven-on-seven football tournament Saturday and Sunday at War Memorial Field, and we've got that permitted. We will also be seeing the following weekend, opening weekend for a new cottage market down at Farm and Park that will be on Friday, the twenty-sixth. And then Sunday, the twenty-eighth, and thereafter, it will be on Sundays through the rest of the summer. And then in the middle of that, on Saturday. The twenty-seventh is the all-in for ALS tennis tournament and walkathon down at Travers Park. And quite a few pickleball players were there this afternoon and said they look forward to being part of this event next year. At the new facility at Travers as well. And then finally, wanted to take this opportunity to recognize. Our infrastructure development services director. This is her last city council meeting and she managed to. Get herself off the agenda for the meeting. So she doesn't have any items tonight, but she is here. At the back of the room, and this will be her last council meeting. Her last day with the city is this Friday, and she is moving on to her new position as city manager. City of Gunnison, Colorado. So. A huge congratulations to her for the growth in her career and moving closer to family, and it will be a huge loss for us here at the city.
Thank you for that. And Amanda, you will be missed. I have a couple of proclamations to read this evening. The first will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day. This proclamation declares the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Sandpoint. To honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence and to declare that we as a country must do more to reduce gun violence. Whereas every day, a hundred and twenty people in the United States are killed with guns and more than two hundred are shot and wounded. And whereas Idaho has two hundred and seventy-five gun deaths every year. And has the fourth highest rate of gun suicides in the US. And whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is a mayor's highest responsibility. And whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. Whereas mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it. And are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas in January two thousand thirteen. Hadia Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age fifteen. And on June second, two thousand twenty-three, to recognize the twenty-sixth birthday of Hadia Pendleton. Born June second nineteen ninety-seven, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to one. Hadia Pendleton and other victims of gun violence and two, the loved ones of those victims. And whereas by wearing orange on June second, two thousand twenty-three, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep fire on firearms out of the wrong hands. And encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore be it resolved that I Shelby Ronstadt, Mayor of Sandpoint, Idaho hereby declare the first day. The first Friday in June, June second, two thousand twenty-three, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. I encourage all citizens to support their local community's efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. Next is a proclamation for. National Safe Boating Week. Whereas on an average. Of six hundred and fifty people die each year in boating-related accidents in the US. Seventy-five percent of these are fatalities caused by drowning. And whereas the vast majority of those these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment. And not by the boat, equipment, or environmental factors. And whereas a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn their life jackets. And whereas the city of Sandpoint lies adjacent to Lake Ponderay and encompasses port encompasses a portion of Sand Creek. And whereas a large number of Sandpoint residents of all ages engage in recreational boating and paddling. And whereas the mission of the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary Flotilla. One thirty dash zero eight dash zero seven flotilla Lake Ponderay. Is to promote and improve recreational boating safety by teaching boating safety courses and conducting vessel safety checks. Now therefore, I Shelby Ronstadt, Mayor of the city of Sandpoint, Idaho, do hereby proclaim May twentieth. To twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three, to be in our community's safe boating and paddling week. And encourage all of Sandpoint's residents to dedicate themselves to learning about and practicing safe boating, including wearing life jackets.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We do have members of the Coast Guard Auxiliary here to accept that proclamation this evening.
Thank you. Members, if you'd like to come forward and meet me at the podium up here.
Anyone like to get a photo?
Yes.
Sure. Okay. We all stand here and face that way? You get the double shot.
The life jackets kind of gave you away there. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. Before we proceed, I'd like to announce that the agenda was amended on Monday afternoon in order to change the order of a couple of items. Excuse me, the proposed proposed ordinance under new business will be taken up next, followed by item nine, a Travers Park renovations, phase one. Project final design update. Because the amended agenda was posted more than forty-eight hours before the meeting, it's not necessary to count for council to vote to approve these changes. Additionally, I would note that nothing was added to or removed from the agenda. This was simply a change in the order of a couple of agenda items. So we will take up new business first this evening with an ordinance that proposes to add rules of civility and rules for decorum at public meetings. To our city code, and I'll yet now yield the floor to our city attorney, Andy Doman.
Thank you, Mayor and council. What we have before you today for your consideration is a proposed ordinance. To be added to the administrative title of the Sandpoint City Code under the miscellaneous provisions. The ordinance is titled Rules of Civility and Rules of Decorum at Public Meetings. It encompasses two specific topics. The first is rules of civility with officials and staff. The second is rules of decorum at public meetings. The ordinance was not created in a vacuum. We researched several other ordinances that were enacted and other provisions that were enacted in different municipalities. In order to come up with a language that we included with this ordinance. It also has been created. Based upon discussions between staff, council, the mayor, which has occurred over several years now, both. Before COVID, during COVID, and after COVID. It's also based on some decided case law, both in the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals and also with the Idaho Supreme Court. Specifically, there's a case from Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, City of Norwalk, which dealt with. The language that we included within this ordinance. There's a case from the Idaho Supreme Court State versus Clark, which was a denial of a petition for overturning a criminal conviction for trespass. And also provisions that are utilized in the city of Pocatello. For trespass on public properties. Briefly, the city of Norwalk case dealt with speakers at meetings. The Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals reviewed the ordinance similar to the one that's before you tonight. And decided that did not violate the individual's First Amendment rights to free speech. And I think there's some relevant sections that come from that opinion I want to address the court with. The court said that. Citizens have an enormous First Amendment interest in directing speech about public issues to those who govern their city. The court went on to say, however, a city council meeting is still just that. A governmental process with a governmental purpose. The council has an agenda to be addressed and dealt with. Public forum or not, the usual First Amendment antipathy to content-oriented control of speech cannot be imported into council chambers. The second case. Is State versus Clark that was decided by our Idaho Supreme Court. This had to do with interactions between a member of the public at the Idaho Industrial Commission. That individual wanted to make complaints about decision was made on an Idaho Industrial Commission application. The court held upheld the trespass conviction, which was a criminal conviction and said that disruptive behavior in a public building. Dedicated to public uses for the purpose of communicating ideas is not protected free speech. Third, the city of Pocatello has addressed this issue on ground on the grounds of. What is appropriate when you come to a city or government-owned facility? In that case, they have provisions that provide for a declaration that somebody is trespassing. However, in order to make sure that the individual's. Interests and opportunities to appeal are provided for, there is a notice of appeal that's provided as part of as part of their statutes. I'd like to go to the ordinance itself. I gotta take my glasses off to read, so bear with me here.
Where to go?
Page one. So. Page one. Under the statement of purpose, and I'm going to paraphrase. But it is included verbatim in that statement of purpose. The section seeks to promote mutual respect. Civility and orderly conduct amongst among city of Sandpoint elected officials, employees, and members of the public. It is not intended to deprive any person of his or her right to freedom of or of expression or free speech. But only to maintain to the extent possible and reasonable, a safe, productive, and harassment-free workplace for city staff. And a safe and non-threatening environment for visitors, customers, and other members of the public. The rules of civility that are stated in that first section. Really encompass. Prohibitions against abusive behavior, both at public meetings and as well as in conduct. At at public facilities such as the city hall or other buildings that are owned by the by the city. When you read down through these prohibitions, they are not intended to curtail free speech at all. It's the behavior that is that is the thing that we we need to make sure that everybody is safe and free. From any harassment, including our employees, who in many cases, they're the front, they're the front people for the city. They are the people that are that are interacted with most by the public. And we have a responsibility to make sure, not just not just on paper, we have a responsibility to our employees to make sure that they have a safe. And and worry-free workplace environment. These behaviors, when you look at them, are intended not to curtail a person's free speech. But behavior that would constant, let me, let me put it this way. Some of you folks, some of you folks are employers. If someone were to come into your place of employment and treat one of your employees poorly. I'm sure that your response would be, well, I'm sorry, but the employee, you'll just have to live with it. I don't think that's what you would do. And that's what this is intended to do. Make sure that our employees have a safe and harassment-free workplace environment. The enforcement provisions that are applicable. Are not just to go to a straight trespass or to. You know, cite somebody for someone for criminal trespass. They're to provide a warning. And that warning can be provided by any city of Sandpoint official or employee, which is an important distinction because in the State versus Clark case. One of the issues was, did the employee who called out the member of the public? Have the authority to do so? And the Idaho Supreme Court said, if they do, then they have the right to to call that person out and say. Your behavior is inappropriate. I'm going to ask you to refrain from that. So we made sure that any employee interacts with the public has the right to do that. Second. It goes from a warning to more progressive. More progressive steps, resisting, removing, or failing to cease behavior. Should any person who is asked to leave or see such behavior fail to do so, city staff or officials may seek law enforcement or legal intervention. We're not trying to curtail people's rights. Right off the bat, but what we are trying to do, and what we should do, is make sure that they have ample warning that their behavior is disruptive under the circumstances. The second portion of the ordinance, and this is on page two. Sorry, I forgot to tell you that. Are the rules of decorum at public meetings? And I want to point out that really what we have done in this section is to codify what has otherwise been. The the routine procedures that we have utilized for public meetings for quite some time. We've always had public forums, even though, and I've mentioned this to you before. The Idaho Public Records Act does not provide for public forums. This is a longstanding tradition at the city of Sandpoint, but it should have and does have restrictions. These are precisely the things that the mayor admonishes. City residents, non-residents, and council at the beginning of each public forum. We've codified that so that we know what those prohibitions will be. Again. The the section on decorum states, this is under B one. Public meetings shall be conducted in an orderly manner to ensure that the public has an opportunity to be heard and that the deliberative process of the board is retained at all times. A city council meeting or other like board meeting is a governmental process with a governmental purpose, which is precisely the language that was used in the state for earlier Norwalk case. You have. Let's go back to another analogy. It's not analogy. Last time I checked, you got a fifty million dollar budget. That's a big budget. That's a fifty million dollar company. You're taxed with the requirements and the responsibilities of running that business. That's the government purpose. That's a purpose for our meetings. We want to make sure that we remain, we we provide rules that. Provide that the meetings will be conducted in orderly fashion so that we can conduct the business of the city. B two, the rules of decorum. These are basically the same rules that we have. We have abided by over time. Again, we codified what has already been in place. Two, a board members, the members of the board shall preserve order and decorum. Next page. To or section B, city staff members, employees of the city shall observe the same rules and order and decorum as those which apply to members of the board. Your responsibility is to make sure that you maintain order and decorum of meetings. Persons addressing the board. If you read through this section, this is almost verbatim what Mayor Ronstadt states at the beginning of each public forum, each public forum portion of the meeting. And it's there for a purpose. It's not there to limit somebody's ability to address the council or to address the mayor. It's there so that we can maintain the order of the meeting going forward on those matters that we're discussing. D, members of the public, no members of the public shall engage in disorderly or boisterous conduct. Again, straight out of Mayor Ronstadt's statement at the beginning of public forum. E talks about addressing the board. We basically codified the same rules that we've used over a period of time. Each speaker's limited three minutes. When called by the presiding officer, individual wishes to speak shall present themselves at the podium. Next page, page four. All remarks shall be addressed to the board as a whole and not to any single member. No questions can be asked of the city council or the city staff. And basically, it's the same, it's the same rules of decorum that we've used for quite some time. So we're not trying to create any any new prohibitions or restrictions, but we are here and we're and we intend to try to. Codify what we have always done at our meetings. On page four, under section three enforcement, again, this is a progressive process, provides for warning. If not, law enforcement may have an individual removed. If the individual resists. Then the individual may be charged or shall be charged with violation of the section. At the bottom of the page, there's a penalty provision. It discusses trespass from city. Facilities for a period not to exceed one year. Any person who continues to. Such behavior may be guilty of a misdemeanor under Idaho Code Section eighteen dash seven oh eight, friends eight punishable. Based upon the violations to provide in our code, which is up to one year imprisonment and a thousand dollar fine. On the last page, page five, there's a right to appeal. This is taken directly from the city of Pocatello protocols. If someone feels that they are aggrieved by an order of trespass issued by the city, city council or by the mayor, they have the right to appeal it. It'll be considered at another meeting of the council and determined at that point in time. Again, we haven't changed anything, but we have codified the things that we've normally done in the past. I don't have any other further presentation. If you have any questions.
Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, Andy, let's work backwards just a little bit on page five. I really appreciate the the right to appeal here. And that we actually have it in writing. I do have a question. Now, we do have a community member that is trespass. Are they allowed to join us for the meeting on Zoom? If they're trespass from city premises?
I would, I. I guess I didn't think about it. And I apologize for not. You're trespass from the premises, not trespass from joining in on a meeting via Zoom.
So it sounds like you can still attend via Zoom despite being trespass from the property as well, too.
Yes.
Moving back to page four on the removal under enforcement, number three here for the warning. Do we alert the community who the presiding officer Sergeant-at-Arms is prior to our city council meetings?
No, but we can. Presiding officer at any city council meeting would be the mayor, and in the absence of the mayor would be the council president, and if not the council president. A member of the council designated by the remaining members. Sergeant-at-Arms would be a law enforcement officer present at the meeting. And generally speaking, it's either Chief Kuhn or one of his, one of his assistants.
Is it typical at any council meetings to notify the community who that who that police officer is that's presiding over that meeting ahead of time?
We haven't. We haven't done it in the past. We could certainly do so as part of our, you know, declaration at the beginning of the public forum.
Perfect. Okay. And then last couple of things here. Let's go to page three. I want to make a comment on page three under section E, addressing the board. Each person speaking shall have up to three minutes. I really appreciate getting this in writing. We've had lots of community members say that we don't have enough time. If you follow down a couple of seconds, or excuse me, a few sentences, we will allow for time to be gifted. And I think this is something that we've been doing over the course of the last, I don't know, six to eight months, at least, and I appreciate seeing this in writing as well. I think that might stop some of the issues in terms of only having the three minutes, being able to get another three minutes gifted to you, to our community members. Going back to page two. Can we talk about F on the top of page two? Redundant redundant calls, visits, or correspondence to city offices or staff which take up considerable city resources? I obviously understand the verbal aggression, but can you guys give me an example of of this where you've got, I mean, how many times are we talking that somebody's coming in? Somebody's calling, somebody's visiting that would kind of trigger F in terms of behavior?
I I think that's a good question. And I think, I think the answer to the question is not very often. There are individuals that come to council that perhaps ask, you know, the same question again and again, based upon, you know, circumstances that if it was me, I mean, I may ask about my bill. And two months later, I may ask about my bill again. Is that, is that redundant calls or redundant visits? No. But I think under the circumstances, if someone's going to come to the city council to to engage with staff over the same issue that they've addressed, you know, numerous times over and over. I think that that behave, it's not the, it's not the communication that we're trying to prescribe. It's the, it's the abusive behavior. Can I give you a mathematical formula? How many times that is? No, I couldn't do that. But I can tell you that if the staff member feels that that's the case, they could say, listen, here's a warning. I think that you're doing this. If you don't believe so, you know, we can deal with it otherwise. I, I think that the instances of that occurring are fairly rare. But when they do, they can be very debilitating upon staff and very disconcerting to members of your staff. And again, what we're trying to do is to protect our employees who are the, they're the face of the city on a lot of these occasions.
And lastly, under four enforcement, we talk about four A is the warning. Is there a protocol after the warning has been given? Is there a form that gets filed? Is there a name that goes on at a time, a date, an action report? Something that we have a record of this, other than just the the warning of the individual at that particular time?
We haven't considered that as part of the ordinance. It's certainly something that could be done. If we're going to do something to that nature, I believe that we need to make sure that the individual knows it. So we haven't addressed it. It may be something that would be applicable at a later point in time or as an amendment to to the ordinance itself. I would be, I would be hesitant to try to carve language into that right now without thinking through that process and what it will entail.
I do want to say, Counsel, I think that's a great suggestion. I could see that. Yeah, I think one thing just procedurally that can happen is if there's a, if if there's something that happens in this meeting and a warning is given, it can be recorded in the record. If it were something that were to happen, you know, at City Hall on a Thursday afternoon or something, then I think an email or or something would would be appropriate. But we can, we can discuss that and and come up with a appropriate process to make sure that something like that doesn't slip through the cracks and that we're effectively communicating with that person when an event like that happens. I appreciate you catching that.
I agree.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Mayor? Page four, if we can go to page four. I guess that would be item two, even though two doesn't show, and then it would be six in the council chambers, once the meeting is underway. It talks about public or not to approach the dais, the clerk, or any other staff member, except I think quite often, sometimes we ask people to turn in their requests to speak at the public forum and bring them up. Are we, are we changing that? Because historically? Okay, and are we going to assign a certain person? I know that police chief has been doing that, but is there?
So can I clarify something? So what what we ask the public to do, if they have something they want to present, is to hand it to staff at the back table. And there's several reasons for that. One in particular, you're right, we used to have
That's my question. It's not whether we put it back there. It's just that if we, if we do ask them to come forward. So we're not doing that anymore. So
Not doing that. Yeah.
We can drop it.
Yeah.
I think we have a protocol in place to take care of that right now.
Yeah.
No, and I understand why we don't want public to approach because it distracts from what they're trying to do.
Thank you. Any other questions, Counsel? All right. Thank you, Andy. Appreciate that presentation. Are there any members of the public, Madam Clerk, that would like to comment on this issue?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, one moment. Carrie Logan.
Good evening. I'm Carrie Logan, and I live in the city of Sandpoint. Sandpoint's rich history of public input and participation and decision-making has suffered in the last few years. Some on council have recently indicated a desire for more public involvement, perhaps at an earlier point in the decision-making process, so that they don't get a lot of negative public comment about the city and council, not listening to the people. Committees are not active, tree and ped bike, while others have been eliminated, parks and rec sustainability. Others have been combined, arts and historic preservation. These committees were populated with nominations by you, Mr. Mayor, and other mayors and confirmation by the council. And each council member had a committee they were assigned to as liaison. They did so much heavy lifting on issues, including research and recommendations. Many volunteer hours were involved, and they were a tremendous asset to the city. Workshops were held with some frequency at the front end of proposed projects to seek and consider public input. We seem to have lost a lot of this. With the limited opportunities we the public have now, the ordinance before you tonight serves to further limit conversation with our decision-makers. The behaviors listed objectively in the ordinance, yelling, clapping, et cetera, are already subject to management by the presiding officer. What concerns me are the subjective behaviors, impertinent, otherwise impedes, irrelevant, repetitious. All is determined by whom. Under rules of civility, A3F, redundant calls, visits, or correspondence to city offices or staff which take up considerable city resources and/or include verbal aggression. Who monitors that? Who tallies? What is the consequence? What constitutes redundancy? Is there a certain number? Banning people from City Hall, banning people from meetings, is there really such a problem that this ordinance is needed? This ordinance will have a very chilling effect on public participation. If I roll my eyes or sigh, am I guilty of impeding a meeting? If so, Mayor Heller would have been kicked out of almost every meeting she was in. If I speak quietly to my seatmate, am I guilty of impeding a meeting? Or is the city just tired of people talking about issues and challenging staff decisions? I've always been of the belief that no one person has all the answers. Embrace opinion and public input. Some great ideas come from that. But don't get your feelings hurt if the speakers don't agree with you. That comes with the job of the city council person and hopefully produces thought. In conclusion, please vote down this ordinance or make huge changes in it for those very limited possibilities of true disruption of meetings. And the sharing minutes only applies to public hearings. It doesn't apply in this ordinance to public forum. And I beat the clock. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Madam Clerk?
Molly O'Reilly.
Hi, Molly O'Reilly, city resident. I think it's really important that no one on council, no one on staff feel harassed or threatened. And I don't think it's important that the public not either. And I was here when council has been threatened and their families have been threatened. And and that's completely horribly unacceptable and discourages people from running for office. But let me just go over a few small things that caught my eye. Page three, big B, small e. Things that happen inside the, a particular meeting. Why put all those details in the ordinance? Why not have the ordinance say, council shall set the rules and they shall be enforced as? And that way, if for some meeting you want one minute, you just want everybody to say yes or no, you can do it. If it's something really complex, you only have three people here, give them five or 10 minutes. But now you've codified three minutes. I, I think you should give yourself more flexibility. And again, repetitious. If you don't agree with something, it can get repetitious really fast. If you agree with it, it's just fine. And I would ask questions. What triggered this? I don't know, but now I can't ask a question. And I know you're not going to answer me while I'm here, but I understand that your legal force has made sure this is legal, but I don't know why you're doing it. And as a citizen, I would really like to know that. And then the appeal. Is this fair? Somebody may not be able to write who wants to appeal. It's written only. The staff, whoever is going to say something at the appeal, there's no response. There's, they're not maybe even supposed to show up. What if they're blind? What if they can't write? What if, what if? I think this is way too limited. That's not a real appeal. That's a, hey, we're going to get you on the, on the next time. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. O'Reilly, for those comments.
Amelia Boyd.
Amelia Boyd, city resident. I appreciate your time. As you know, I've been to many a meetings for the last several years. I'm probably a regular, even when topics aren't exciting as they have been recently. I have witnessed personally, personal attacks on your staff, on city council here in this hall. Disrespectful behavior. And I find it ironic when this is the love lives here city campaign that we've had for the last several years, that that respect and decorum fails to enter here by some of our citizens. It's disheartening to see. It's frustrating to watch. I normally don't speak at these. I watch and listen and learn as much as I can. But for this, I feel it is very important and vital. And Mr. Mayor, I have witnessed you not enforce when people are disrespectful to staff and not enforcing those rules that you do state. So I would encourage you to enforce those when people get to that point to your staff members, because a hostile work environment is should not and should ever be allowed, especially for the employees that work here. I don't always agree, and nobody's ever going to agree, and the city is not going to do everything perfect. And you're not going to make everybody happy. We all know that. It's just if you can avoid some of this pressure that staff is feeling and the disrespect and the bottom line nastiness that I have witnessed and you have witnessed and staff has witnessed. It's enough is enough. And it's now time to take a stand against that nastiness because it's abhorrent and embarrassing. And we all need to remember that we are adults. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Boyd.
Jeremy Grimm.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Jeremy Grimm, City of Sandpoint resident. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you on this item tonight. I, I think you're all aware, I spent eight years, almost eight years at City Hall dealing with the public. I understand the challenges, the frustration, times the scariness of that. If any of you've been watching the county commissioner meetings recently, there's clearly need for clear rules of engagement and public discourse. I do want to emphasize that I'm concerned about one part, and that's the the portion that Councilman Dick brought up about, you know, redundant comment. For example, in the past, I have mentioned that I think that the city's in violation of Idaho Code related to development impact fees and that program, the fact that it hasn't been updated in five years, the fact that the Impact Fee Advisory Committee hasn't met to acknowledge and confirm collections or expenditures of the impact fee per Idaho Code. If I were to say that at every meeting, because I know the code and I read it, I'm not an attorney, I could potentially be barred from the the meeting. I could be barred from City Hall simply because I think this is a big issue and that the city's not taking that issue under advisement. So I would encourage, if you do proceed, that you either quantify or articulate that section. What is redundancy? What is, you know, repetitive behavior? Further on that point, I'd say, you know, I sometime am engaging with city staff dozens of times a week with my professional business. And at what point is it determined that I'm being repetitive? Because somebody's not responding to an application after six months or something to that effect. So those are my concerns, and I appreciate the job you do. Appreciate you running for office and making these hard decisions and wish you best of luck. Thanks.
Appreciate those comments, Mr. Grimm.
Rebecca Holland.
Carry my computer with two hands. Good evening, Council. Rebecca Holland, for the record, a 48-year resident of Bonner County, 32-year owner of a Sandpoint business, now retired. This is how I carry my computer when I walk with two hands. On April 19th, I addressed council. I was not guilty of any abusive language or disruptive behavior as recorded in video minutes. When I left chambers after addressing council, I was later accused of clapping my hands and in a taunting way toward a staff person sitting at the back. With two hands on my computer, this would have been impossible thing for me to do. But an investigation by the Sandpoint Police began the next day, and eventually I was told I could not, I was, I was told then I was not to attend any more city meetings or workshops. Three months was mentioned. If I attended attended a meeting, I'd be told to leave. If I didn't leave, I'd be charged with criminal trespassing. Just like that, under this ordinance that you're looking at tonight. I did not attend two workshops just out of fear. The real purpose for this proposed rule is to control anyone who speaks in opposition to decisions made by city staff or what staff has said to council. In my case, I came to inform council of some very misleading information given to you by the city administrator. I had proof due to a public record request that proved the manipulation of an important fact, a fact council I thought needed to know. Under the ordinance, under this ordinance, a city citizen can be banned from addressing council by saying that this matter of concern should be handled during regular business hours at City Hall. No thought to the matter that this may involve a staff mislead, misdeed. And for the record, I did message the mayor first, but got no reply. It's the council's role to represent the people. The people need to be able to It's the council's role to represent the people. The people need to be able to come to council to share their thoughts and concerns. Yes, it needs to be done in a respectful manner without name calling. I really like, I like to remember what my mom taught me. It's like, I'd be in big trouble if I called my brother an idiot. But I was okay if I challenged him about his idiotic ideas. It may be annoying to you that I've strongly challenged a recent city decision. But the council shouldn't try to slap trespassing charges on me for speaking in a public forum. Is this a council's idea of upholding democracy? Everything about this long, six-page ordinance is worrisome. Knowing that council directed staff over a year ago to bring forward a better language on a different ordinance regarding Sand Creek setbacks, which they have not delivered on, you'd think you'd want to direct the city attorney to put his time into a far more important issue.
Holland, your time is up.
And I carry my computer with two hands. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
One moment, let me check online, Mr. Mayor. I see no hands raised. I believe that is all.
Okay. I will now read the title of the ordinance as follows. An ordinance of the City of Sandpoint, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, amending Sandpoint City Code Title One, Chapter Ten, with the addition of a new section to be titled Rules of Civility, Rules of Decorum at Public Meetings, Providing for Repeal and Severability and Providing for Publication and an Effective Date. I would entertain a motion that the ordinance passed its first reading by title only and the summary is approved. Sir, motion? Sir, second?
Second.
And moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, go ahead. You go. I'll go after you. Okay, so. I hear you. This is. I decided to do this and run to do the greatest amount of good with the least amount of harm. To focus primarily on drivable streets, drinkable water, flushable toilets. That's been my focus. My experience in these three and a half years has been. I knew what I was getting myself into and and that was, and that's okay. Thick skin, tender heart, calloused hands. However. The behavior of some of our community members is it does not make me proud to live here. The way that people have talked, communicated, seen each other in the street, emails, texts. It's whether we do this or something else. It needs to be brought into the light to our public that we have mean, awful, cruel people in our community that abuse and harass. Employees, yes. Citizens, yes. Humans, yes. And it is not okay. And so if there are things that we need to talk about or add to this document, then we can. However. Conduct came before the code. The only reason why we're talking about this is that the conduct of our public has has not made me proud. Not going to speak for anybody else except for me. If the, this is my family, if these were my employees and this was my working environment. I would not tolerate the behavior that I've seen, heard, and Councilman Spiral.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate all the comments from the citizens speaking up because we do appreciate it because you guys bring up good points that we can consider. I personally, I guess a question maybe I have for Andy is we seem to, I think, do a pretty good job of controlling time and all of those things. What would be the point on the action item as opposed to life as usual? Is it legal reasons?
In terms of the ordinance as a whole?
Right.
Well, for one thing, we don't have anything codified on public forum procedures. And we don't have anything codified when someone would come to city property and be confrontational with one of our employees or act in a manner that was inconsistent with the ordinance. It's not a question of whether or not we can do that, but we don't have any rules right now. We're, I mean, we've talked about this before. We have, you know, Mayor gets his, his, his lead into the public forum. There's nothing there. We, that's not even codified. And I think it's important for us to have that codified somewhere. So everybody knows what, everybody knows what the groundwork is. And when people come to county, and when people come to city council chambers or to the city hall or interact with city employees. They treat those employees the same way that they would want to be treated under like circumstances. Employees are entitled to the same level of civility as councilmen, as the mayor and most importantly, as members of public. But that's purpose for the rules.
Understood. Appreciate that. So yeah, I guess my and Andy, I can agree with what you're saying. I've always understood it for an elected official, like we're free game. That's how, I mean, doesn't mean it's appreciated, doesn't mean our feelings don't get hurt. We're humans too. But for for us, I'm like, it's the nature of the beast. You can come at me. Obviously, if there's personal attacks and police need to get involved, well, that's a whole different story. But when it comes to just name calling or anything like that, for for me, it is what it is. What I'm hearing with this ordinance is the concern for staff abuse. Mr. Grimm spoke and he had some very good points. Everybody did. It's subjective, right? What is redundancy? And that's a lot of life is perspective and you I trust that our staff, our council members could use their brain to say, hey, Jeremy coming up with the concern, going to staff respectfully, representing his business. I'm sorry to use your name, Jeremy. It was just a good point. Being respectful from a business perspective, that I don't think anybody's going to see as harassment, maybe annoying, but not harassment. Right? I think it's deeper than that. What I'm hearing is behavior, correct? But it could be a different council, could be different staff where somebody can come in asking a simple question and say their feelings got hurt. And that individual's harassing them. And then now that individuals potentially kicked out, which brings up another good point of written testimony, which what if the individual can't write? They're not a good writer. So I think those are very good things that I think we can look at this more carefully and be more clear with our writing to protect not only us as a city, but the citizens as well. I think everybody had some really good points. So I guess being more clear on the redundancy, maybe given more leeway to our chief administrator, especially with the time. Molly brought up some good points. What if it's a small council meeting, an individual, it's a, they want to speak a little bit more, I think, giving that luxury to the mayor to be able to dictate that. Important as our chief administrator, if he's not here, then council president. So I think there's some things that we can look at to make this even better and not only protecting the council, but also the citizens to feel safe and heard. We do have a agenda. We got to get things going. We're not always going to be able to give everybody twenty minutes. We've been here eleven before and maybe twelve soon, but which it happens, but I think we can look at this and have a little bit clearer definitions and where we can feel comfortable and protected. More importantly, staff can feel comfortable and protected and the citizens can also feel heard and free to speak. So those are my two, couple of my points. I think we can clean it up a little bit and that's why we have public forums. So citizens have good points and we can take that into consideration. So that's all I got.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Great comments. Counselor, yeah, go ahead.
I just concur with Joel. I think a number of different people made good points. I believe Councilman Dick made some good points. And I would request that we remove the motion and maybe move a motion to table this so that all of us get more of an opportunity to process public comments. Staff gets an opportunity to look at this and we bring it back again at a later date, set in time. I do think it's extremely important to protect our staff. I have personally witnessed staff being harassed. And I don't want them to think that I'm dropping the ball or letting them down by tabling this, but I also think we have to listen to the public. I agree with Joel in that we are free game up here. It doesn't always feel good as someone who's received their own death threat from the public, but you know, you just power through and 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 move on. So that would be my suggestion that we table this to a later date in time.
But it is so important. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councillors, anyone else want to weigh in?
Oh, yeah, I'll respond. I actually agree with Joel and Deb that there are some valid points specifically with some of the concerns that Justin raised as well about the written warning aspect. If we're saying you have a warning, there should be some record of that. The redundancy question on item F, I think, could be clarified per Jeremy's comments. I don't think, Jeremy, the intent is to, you know, squash speech or the public's concerns about particular procedures at the city. I I really respect and and understand the spirit of the ordinance, which is to, you know, put some guide guardrails on behavior. I think this isn't about free speech. This is about the behavior and the you know, what's appropriate decorum. And when we, when I joined council a year and a half ago, this was literally like, I think, one of the first things we talked about adopting. I feel like this was supposed to come to us a year and a half ago. So just for the public's record, like our strategic planning that we did in December of twenty twenty-one, we talked about adopting this ordinance then. This is something that should have been done a year and a half ago. So this is, I think, a really important step that we do move forward with this. But I do think a couple line items that perhaps you've gotten some good feedback on from the public tonight could be looked at more closely. So I'd be in favor of tabling this for perhaps the next meeting or a future meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
I would also agree, I, Molly O'Reilly's point about the written, I think that was very, I think that was very poignant. And Joel, to your, your response, I appreciate what you said. So I think with some quantifying and qualifying some of the statements there, I think it would make it a better, but you're right. A year and a half ago, we've been talking about it and unfortunately, all of us have witnessed bad decorum. And we certainly want to stop that. And we know our staff has been harassed and it's quite disconcerting. So I would agree that it needs a little bit more work on the language, but I certainly would like it to come back before council soon so that we can vote on it.
Mr. Mayor, just one quick comment to do with the time. I also have a concern, as we said, we would put public forum at the end of meetings. And if we have a contentious item or a room full and an audience out in the danty room, that you would have the ability to go from three minutes to one minute because some of the comments, when you're hearing from that many people can tend to speak to the same opinion, shall we say? So I think that time piece, to have flexibility with the time piece. Just something else to note. More time, but also the opportunity to say you get less time today because we don't want to be here till three in the morning.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, just in the effort to saving some time, I confer with the rest of the councillors up here as well. I do remember the meeting that we went to in December. We should have done that. And I take a little bit of blame myself as well, too. We should have. Or at least speaking of as myself, I should have brought that to staff's attention as well. We certainly don't want to limit anyone's speech at any of these. Many, many good ideas and engagement opportunities have come up. I've learned so much from this community. What I have seen that's broken my heart is staff harassment. And I've seen it on two different occasions and it hurt and I'd love to move forward with this document today. However, I feel like we're not far off from making a few changes in getting this back out and protecting staff, but also protecting the freedom of speech of our community members to be in this room and to be heard.
Excellent. Yeah, thank you. So I want to just make sure, yeah, you got one more.
Sorry, yeah, I got one more that I just remembered that I wrote down. This is kind of outside the nature of the entire ordinance, but where we were going to stick it in the code, I think is problematic. It was under sort of administrative miscellaneous. And I think that we need to take a little bit of time to rethink that. I think the public looking for this code, they're going to look at for, look for it underneath ethics or I had it pulled up on my computer, but my computer shut down really quickly. Either under, possibly under chapter five of mayor and city council or further down under chapter seven code of ethics. I don't see how chapter one or title one administrative, chapter one official, official official municipal code. It's kind of stuck in there with the city seal. It doesn't make any sense to me to, there's nothing else in that particular spot. So that's not important as to the nature of the bill, but if the public's looking for it, I would never look for it there. So if we could maybe have further discussions about that. Does that make sense? I know that was a little confusing. Sorry, I was not concise.
We get the point.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry.
Let me just make sure that that I captured everything that the council is interested in amending here so that we can make sure that we give staff proper direction. But I think I hear close to unanimous consent on granting more flexibility under forgive me here for seconds, under item E, which would be two E, Rules of Decorum. And particularly those first two, the single I and double I. I think those were the key ones, the, in the first I, it limits speaking to three minutes. And then it's specific as to where and how public comment should be given, but as we know, you know, it could be, we could be in a workshop format or some other kind of format or at Sandpoint Community Hall. So there's quite a bit of variability that can happen at these meetings and and the intention that we heard from the public, and I think the intention of this body is that we leave as much flexibility in there as possible. And so we want to review this and make sure that we're giving the council plenty of flexibility there. The other thing that I heard is, in this one, I think I heard most resound and resoundingly is that issue of redundancy. And that is in bear with me, it's item F under number three. Redundant calls, visits or correspondence to city officers or staff which take up considerably city resources and or include verbal aggression. So we actually did have quite a bit of discussion about this internally. And we actually discussed this before coming to the meeting tonight and whether we wanted to to amend that. And I certainly understand everything that was shared by members of the public here. I share those concerns as well, but and and there were the question was, you know, what's, what's kind of triggering this? What's the motivation? And I want to be clear that, you know, while I was comfortable with the idea of just taking out redundancy, redundancy altogether and leaving it about verbal aggression or other forms of aggression. What it didn't capture is one thing that we've seen happening increasingly here. And that is that we all know what public records requests are, and we all know that that's a normal function of business here at City Hall and has been for a long time. But what we're seeing now is public records requests can be weaponized. And a member of the public can decide that they want to harass our city clerk more than anyone else, but she certainly bears the brunt of it, but it impacts all of staff. Our clerk's work schedule has been impacted such that recently response to public records requests now comprises about fifty percent of her workload, which is ridiculous. It's just way out of proportion of what it should be. And and by the way, for those of you don't know, Melissa's probably clocking in at about an average of sixty-five to seventy hours a week, every week, every month. She works incredibly hard, as do many, many members of our staff here. And particularly everybody that you see sitting back there at the leadership table, everybody that you see here in front puts in incredible hours at this work and and often very stressful work. And in in relation to what we're talking about here today, often under a lot of stress. Dealing with members of the public who are angry or upset and they may not even be upset at the person that they're dealing with. They're upset at one of us for making a decision or somebody else at City Hall for something that they said or did. But yet Melissa has to bear the brunt of this, as does the rest of the leadership team that has to respond to these public records requests. So this is one example of what we're So this is one example of what we're talking about when we're talking about redundant. Excuse me, redundant calls, visits or correspondence. So I I agree that that that's vague and that that can be certainly, you know, Mr. Graham, you made excellent points. You do business with the city every day and every week. And we're certainly not trying to, you know, we don't want you or or anyone like you to feel targeted because you're coming in to do business with the city. Or because, you know, you regularly have questions about your utility bill or whatever the case may be. But if you're using city policy and city procedures to try to simply simply for the apparently sole purpose of overworking staff because you think that that's funny or something. I don't know why someone would do that. But that's, that seems to be the effect of it. And so we need to find something to be able to protect staff from that kind of abuse. That that aside, I think, I think we all agree that in in terms of verbal aggression, other forms of aggression. You know, we all want to protect staff from that. We all have a responsibility up here at this dais to protect our staff from being in an unsafe and unpleasant work environment. And certainly, if we want to be able to maintain, retain and a a good quality, the good staff that we have, we have to be able to provide that environment. So that's why this ordinance is before us. The other issue that I heard was the issued, the the record of warning, and you brought that up. councillor Dick, and I really appreciate that comment. I think we do need to be clear in the ordinance that we have a record of that warning. Whether it's in the record here at the chambers at our city council meeting. But there needs to be some sort of written record, whether it's an email or what have you, and that needs to be a part of, part of the process. I think that was a great catch. And then lastly, the councilwoman recommended the location of this ordinance not be under administration, but maybe find a more appropriate location for that. And I would just leave it up to staff if you don't mind to take another review of that and see if there is maybe a more appropriate location. Okay. Was there anything that I missed that that this group feels is important? Yep, go ahead.
Want to make sure, Mr. Mayor, the writing appeal or speaking, did you touch that?
Yeah, yes, thank you. The the appeal process is limited. Thank you for catching that. Ms. O'Reilly brought that comment up. That was a good catch as well. That we need to make sure that the appeal process allows for anyone regardless of ability to be able to file an appeal if they feel that they have been if they feel that's warranted. So I think that was everything that that we want Andy to take another swing at.
Mr. Mayor, two last things. The attending from Zoom if someone has trespassed.
So that, yeah.
I don't know what that may look like legally. And the other thing that I would personally like to see, and I say this as a community member that has enjoyed the protections of our police officers and knows them very well. I think a lot of the community and a lot of the community in this real room knows our police officers, and I I think it would be wise to identify the presiding law enforcement to the start of each meeting to let everybody knew who that is, where they sit in the room, and that they will be the presiding officer. I I appreciate that. I it makes me feel comfortable knowing that Cory is sitting back there. I do not know if all of our community members know who Cory or the rest of the police force is and that they will be presiding, presiding over this, over these meetings. And that's as simple as a statement made by yourself moving.
Yeah, fair enough. That's okay. I think that's acceptable. And and with, I just want you to know that with regards to the Zoom, we did have discussion about that and and we were unanimous that anyone, you know, if if someone were trespassed, that Zoom would still be able to participate on Zoom. And and the reason is, is first of all, we obviously want to create any opportunity for someone to participate, but if someone was being, you know, inappropriate on Zoom, the clerk can simply cut them off, right? So so we have a built-in protection there. But I I hear what you're saying, that that could be explicit in the ordinance so that it's clear. And I think we've captured everyone's concerns there. And I guess at this point, I would entertain a motion to table this ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, do we have to?
My apologies for the interruption, but I believe we need to have the person who made the motion withdraw the motion.
Thank you. Was that?
I made a motion to approve the reading of the title by a single reading, I believe. So I will withdraw that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Sounds good.
I'll make a motion to table to a set date and time. Do we need to give staff a month or how do, what do we feel is appropriate? I'm trying to get some eye contact there from Andy because he's the
We can do it within thirty days.
Okay. Then I would make a motion that we table this to a set time with the next council meeting that falls within thirty days at maximum.
Second.
Is that satisfactory?
I've got my notes.
Do I get a second, anybody?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to table this for, we'll say, the second meeting in June till the, till no later than the second meeting in June. It's been moved and seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Councillor McAllister.
Yes.
Councillor Rule.
Yes.
Councillor Spurre.
I do appreciate everybody's comments. Yes.
Councillor Groth.
Yes.
Councillor Welker.
Yes.
Councillor Dick.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have an update on on the final design of the Traverse Park renovations, phase one project. I'll now yield the floor to city administrator Jennifer Stapleton and Maeve Laventar, Nevins Laventar, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are back before you tonight with Maeve serving in our role as park planning. Our parks planning manager and our project manager for our Traverse Park improvements. As council will recall, this all started back in late twenty eighteen when we started our Parks and Recreation. Our first ever comprehensive Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And we had a robust couple of year process with the development of that plan, which ultimately ended in the adoption of the plan in twenty twenty. As well as parks concepts for four of our different parks areas, including Traverse Parks. That concept for Traverse Park envisioned a indoor facility at some time in the future to address tennis was primarily discussed at the time and pickleball was a rising sport. So but what our master plan spoke to is multipurpose facilities. And so that became an indoor tennis and pickleball facility. And in March of last year, we announced a generous donation from the James Z Russell family to actually fund the indoor sports court. And that donation was in the amount of seven point five million dollars specifically to fund that indoor building and a gateway to that. So Maeve and our whole design and construction team will walk through that process. We awarded a a project in spring of last year, and this is a bit different than how we've done our other construction projects. And it was a design build project. So design and build is all occurring at the same time in order to expedite this process. And until we were to the point of having full design and ready for construction, we didn't have a full sign to reveal. Unfortunately, in this process that we've discussed, we had to change our contractors for this project. We retained our design team fortunately to move forward. But originally, we had awarded the design build contract to Emmerich Construction. And more recently, we continued moving forward after discontinuing terminating that contract with Emmerich and receiving all of the fees paid back as a refund to the city. We awarded separate contracts to ALSC architects to continue their work as the design team for this project with MW engineers, Mike Terrell Landscape Architecture and DCI engineers. We also separately contracted with Dream Landscape Parks to continue the work that they were doing on our skate park expansion. And then we contracted directly with General Construction after doing a mini selection process to take the role of construction manager, general contractor for this project. So the construction subcontractors will all be under General Construction. Simultaneously with this belt, with this building development over the last year, we have also been working on design for the skate park. And Maeve and team will talk a little bit about that tonight. We had a meeting with, a couple of meetings with our skate park users last fall, another one about a month ago. Looking at concepts and designs for the skate park. So and then council will recall, we got approval by council and went through the process of submitting a grant to the state for land water conservation funds to fund the relocation and expansion of our existing playground with the addition of a splash pad and upgrading our playground so that it is fully accessible. And as councillor Rule, and I know councillor Welker was at our workshop yesterday, we learned a lot about the difference between ADA accessible and fully accessible. And this is intended to be a fully accessible playground, which exceeds ADA standards, which are really directed around physical disabilities. And don't address a lot of others, as Maeve calls them, superpowers that are about accessibility for the playgrounds. We were notified about two weeks ago from the state that we were selected. The Parks and Rec Commission did their ranking of grant applications for the land water conservation grant program. We were selected the number two project in the state. The project ahead of us was an aquatics facility upgrade in Mountain Home. And the funding line for projects is well below where we were selected. It's about at number eight, I think, is where it was. So we are well above the funding line, which means now we just scroll through the next process of them processing those applications that they wish to fund through the feds. Because it's federal dollars that passes through the state, the state's getting a specific allocation, the state's likes what projects they want to fund. And then they have to move those projects just through the final approval process through the federal government. So that's where we are. There's been some speculation in the community about really, do we know if we're getting this grant or not? We know we're getting this grant. So we expect final award to come through fall of this year. And as council will recall, the playground project was estimated to be about a one point one million dollar project. The grant is funding half of that project. And we would have loved to expand that project beyond just the playground. We talked about the need for additional parking at this facility, field improvements that are envisioned in the master plan. But the fact is, with supply chain costs, particularly for public projects and construction costs these days, one point one million dollars doesn't extend past renovation and expansion of this playground and splash pad. But it is going to be a wonderful amenity for this community. In terms of timing of these projects, we are in the process of getting a groundbreaking scheduled. It looks like probably, we were talking in the park, we're probably June thirtieth at an official groundbreaking for the building project. And then moving forward with full construction this summer with an anticipated completion time of spring of next year. We have pushed the design team and our general construction, our whole team on this, and they're all going to be nodding behind me. Very hard on this project because the state tennis finals are here next year. And our goal was to have this building completed for state finals so that our kids in this community who play for the high school will be able to play in this new facility. All the landscaping may not be done, but we are pushing hard and our hard fast timeline is the building needs to be complete with occupancy to the building. So this tournament can occur in this building. So we will make that timeline next spring. We're scheduled to be completed in March or April of next year. And then once the building is completed, then we will move on to the playground splash pad renovation as well as the skate park. Some may wonder why all of that isn't happening at the same time, and it's because we need staging areas. We don't want to close down the park to the public. We want to keep access for the public to the park. We want to keep as many amenities in the park open as possible throughout the summer. And with that, we need to stage how we are doing construction. So the building will go in first and next year will be the skate park as well as the playground splash pad. There is a plan and they'll address it tonight where the existing playground will be relocated. The components that are usable, that we can retain this summer to the new location for the playground. So the playground can be reopened this summer and then expanded upon next summer. So we are not closing the playground for a year. Everything has been really thought out for how to make this happen. And this team has worked very hard, very long days to make this happen. We are still in the process of working through our operations plan for the facility because of changes that we've had, the change in contractors. It kind of got us a little bit delayed in that more than what we had anticipated, but we needed to get this moving forward. And we had benchmarks we had to make with getting it moved forward. Barry Dunn is still on board and working on the operations plan. Most recently, they worked with us on the updated court reservation policy for all of our courts across our park system. This week, I think, believe it's going to start tomorrow possibly. We are restriping the courts down at City Beach for multipurpose bulk tennis as well as pickleball. So we've awarded that contract, that striping will happen. And our policies and procedures relative to the courts are like what we have done in the past. So we have open public time and there is no charge to use our courts. Then there's reserved times and there are leagues that play on our courts and they reserve time and pay fees. We do have play to play built into our park system, and that's on our fields, that's in our grandstands, that's in our courts. So that already exists in our, in our system today. And then finally, the other thing I want to announce tonight, and it will be coming back to council, probably at one of your June meetings is we've had the donation from the Russell family for the last year. I've been working with Jim Russell on options that we could have with the interest earnings that we've had on the donation because they passed through the cash last year. And the plan, what I will be coming back asking for ultimately council approval on the agreement will be to establish the James Z Russell Sports Center Endowment Fund with the community foundation that will then support maintenance and operation into the future in perpetuity for this facility. We have about a hundred and fifty thousand in interest earnings to date on that and hope to be able to put a good portion of those to the endowment fund. And then we also create a permanent fund that community members, if they want to make an in memoriam donation, there's a fund, there's a something that if we really think in the big picture with growth, with continued contributions to a fund in the future could be a way that we have a facility that pays for itself and is open to the public free in the future. But we have to be seated with something. And Jim Russell and Jenny Russell have agreed that that would be an appropriate use with those interest earnings and those really good financial stewardship of the city and limiting impacts on taxpayers in our community. So that will be coming back to council. Last but not least, our other project that we'll have going on this summer, and I think Maeve's going to cover that a little bit too, is in partnership with the Ponderay Peddlers, the renovation of the bike skills course. And I know Ponderay Peddlers just received announcement of they are above the funding level for a state grant as well for that project. So we've been very successful in the state level parks funding this year. And we will see the differences in Traverse Park. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to the team.
Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Mayor and council. I'd like to proudly introduce my team who I haven't slept much and they probably slept less. So thank you very much. If you wouldn't mind coming up, whoever's going to speak, but I I do want to introduce, we have Gail Stanley. She's our project manager with ALSC. And then we have our general team, Rich, Matt, and I think Isaiah back in the corner, and Isaiah lives here, so you might recognize his familiar face. They'll be our construction team. And we have more, more team members. So Troy Bishop is also one of our architects, and he's going to help me present. And Mike Terrell, and he is our landscape architect, and he'll also be helping to present. I think that's the team that we have. I think that's the team that we have here tonight. So wow, we've been working on this a long time. You've heard me talk a lot about this project and never be able to show you anything. So this is a very exciting day and we've been building up to it with the amazing inclusive play presentation and workshop yesterday. And I really want to thank all the community members who came out for that. It was quite the showing. If you were at the park or you were here for lunch, we got to meet our friend Jill Moore, who is an inclusive playground specialist and learn all about inclusive play and what it means to be an integrated design and design a playground for all ages and all abilities or all superpowers. And no longer is there just one thing for one type of a person and one superpower over here and one over there. Instead, we're all superheroes together. So I'm pretty excited about that. And of course, the grant, we've had a robust community stakeholder engagement process. And you have the chart in front of you. I think I've actually presented this in the past. But it is worth pointing out that a lot of the concerns that we've been having from the community over the last year, we have considered them in our design considerations. And I don't know that we really want to dive through all of this because we have a much better topic to talk about. But this presentation will be available by the end of the week. I'll have it up on the website and folks can dive into it deeper. There's one point on here I do want to want to bring to everyone's attention. Pickleball, if you haven't been around pickleball, it is not a quiet sport. And in the original master plan, the pickleball courts, there would have been, I think, about sixteen of them at Traverse Park outdoors. And one of the advantages of bringing pickleball indoors with tennis now is that now you won't be hearing it all hours of the day. And there's a trend in the Parks and Rec realm where they're actually relocating pickleball courts that are in neighborhoods. And so that's just a bonus to the planning efforts that we've gone through. But we did do our best to address noise, view sheds. And you'll see how the building is sighted into the site to the best of the ability and still not impacting the adjacent uses. We really wanted to have as limited impact to everyone as we could. We really want to make sure people can still access the trails and the circulation from Pine Street. So you're going to see that connection tonight and there's now multiple connections. So and wider pathways and much more of a community hub experience. We have something for every wheeled user that you can imagine. We've got the bike skills course, we have the all-wheeled skate park expansion. We did consider volleyball, baseball or basketball and other sports. And we are looking at future opportunities for that in the long range and the long rain. And the playground, you heard about that. Yes, thank you so much for your feedback. We got a lot of great comments from the community on the playground and what people desired and where we should focus the grant. And we were able to flip that in just a week, we got that grant out. And thank you particularly to Mayor for coming with me to Boise and presenting. I think it was all you, so thank you so much. And of course, the community for being very vocal throughout this outreach process about what materials they prefer and what kind of a vernacular of the community they want to preserve. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Troy and Mike to discuss and reveal the project.
Okay. Hi, my name is Troy Bishop, Director of Design and Partner with ALS C Architects. And I first want to say that we're honored to present to you tonight and be working with the city. It's been a dynamic design phase and we're excited to share with you. I apologize to the community that they get to see the terrible side of my presentation skills. But it was really fun engaging with everybody in the park today. And it's probably the most interactive community kind of come check it out type thing that I've been to. And so it just kind of shows the vibrancy of the park. It's really cool. We don't start any project without first aligning language. And so I wanted to just first, I know everybody wants to see the cool pictures. But the language that we've been working with the team here on really kind of embodies the design principles of this building's going to have. And so really, it's been about celebrating the donors. I mean, the gift from the Russells has been amazing, but it's a finite amount. And so in that kind of celebrating them is also being a steward of those funds. And so we've really been working with our construction team to make sure that we're going to deliver the program they're expecting plus what the community is expecting. Second is really the community focus. And so this really is prioritizing tennis and pickleball. But there's also a piece to this, which is going to be fun to show you that really is about for every park user to really be that new gateway, which is the next design principle. This building is going to establish a grand entrance to Traverse Park. It's going to be a steward of the Traverse name, but also show this gift and also this dynamic park. Then Mike's got some really cool stuff coming up, but this is just the first part of this grand entrance. Next is it's a high-performance building. We're looking at a long span building that performs better than your typical metal building as far as in a sustainable manner, also knowing about the cost of operations throughout its lifespan. And also, it's just it's hard to produce these buildings with this kind of span without those costs becoming astronomical. So we've tried to find a system that is both sustainable, but also highly economical. And again, stretching those donors' dollars for this project. Next has been probably one of the most dynamic parts, which Michael talked about, is how do we have an effective project phasing to not just put a giant rock in the way for anybody who likes to enjoy the park, kind of minimize disruption. And so we've really been working on an effective project phasing. And then lastly, and certainly not least, is how is this uniquely sandpoint? You know, how do you park a building this size, just under 40,000 square feet in a park and have it be integral and also be a reflection of this community? And so we've had lots of discussions with the team on that. And we are trying to find ways that the community can get involved and also have a materiality that celebrates its location and in some of the past of this community. So just to give a little background is I think a lot of people were expecting this building to maybe be somewhere else or directly over the tennis courts. But really, we started of utilizing that asset. We did not want to disrupt the tennis courts. We really didn't want to disrupt them the entire time we're doing construction. And so we really looked at two spots within the park. One is called the hub, which is directly adjacent, central, but still leaving a meandering green space next to it for other parkgoers. And the second was the trailhead, which really looked at this being a little bit more parallel to Pine Street. And yes, we are parking this building somewhere in the middle of this dynamic green space. But we also thought that would be a lot better place than having more parking push up into there when the final phase of parking goes in there. And you'd have parking in the middle of that green space. And so the hub was also chosen for direct proximity to the outdoor courts. So there's a dynamic between the indoor and the outdoor racket facilities.
Can I just add to that, as I recall, the soils were a problem in that first location. And it was also cited because we had firmer ground to build on there, the proposed location, is that right?
Sure, and I'll also add that I don't think there's any soil in Traverse Park that's amazing. The trailhead supposedly was going to be right over the land. So it's not great soils anywhere, but that was another factor, but it was
Welcome to Sandpoint.
That's right.
They don't call it Sandpoint for nothing, right?
When your neighbors chuck slew. So I also, the more we do this design, and I really think this is going to be a very cool way to accept and distribute people. Park, so this is really an overview of the building being into the park, but still maintaining the function. This is just phase one. It's going to be very dynamic to show you how phase two comes into play. But again, it's, we also wanted the shape of this building to have the most narrow face facing Pine Street, so you still can look into the park and beyond. So how do you get the program that the Russells are expecting, but be the least visual impact? And so that's really been another part of the sighting of this project. So here's kind of that roadmap, talking about all the parts and pieces of having effective planning and effective phasing. And so we're just highlighting phase one, which will be our courts facility, a covered outdoor area that I'm really very proud of as far as this new awning space for the community to come together. And then you can start to see that Mike and our team is really starting to relocate assets such as the existing playground facility and the existing shelter, because we know that they're all important pieces of this park. So we're looking at places that those can be moved in the interim, still enjoyed during construction. You can really see how the buildings related to the adjacent tennis courts. And then how this new trailhead, which is also a fire lane, but masked as a trailhead, weaves in next to this building and really is kind of a new way to gather people and distribute them to the park. Mike's going to bring up some other things in a little bit, but that's kind of the big overview. So this really kind of shows that environment after phase one. And again, that uniquely sandpoint space really think is as you come into Traverse Park and you come to this forecourt before you even go into the building. That forecourt's also programmed with a community space within the building. So now you could have parties, groups, you know, hopefully like the quilting club. In addition to the racket club, could start to use these spaces and spill outside. There could be programmed wellness classes, exercise classes underneath this awning. And so I think that's a gift beyond just the function of the racket sports building. That's pretty cool. We're also looking at it kind of the translucency of how we can bring in some daylight through this system. So we're studying that on the north and south gable ends. And you'll also see down low where some of the people are congregating, there is new bathrooms that are going to be accessible in a heated building as the existing bathroom buildings can often be locked out of season. And so I think that's going to be a new amenity that's pretty cool. So this is really this grand entrance. And so what we're doing is there's a, it's called the legacy building system that actually makes up the sports center. But out front is a custom-built awning and kind of this donor opportunity zone that really embodies what we've been talking about, what is uniquely sandpoint. And so what you're also seeing is a very interactive landscape that deals with the amount of water that can be, you know, the notorious groundwater at Traverse Park can feed into this bio-swell that also can be a learning tool. And that ultimately will be linked to the upcoming splash pad, which will be themed around the creek. But here's kind of if we cut the building and you could look down, you can start to see that we're programmed for tennis courts, 16 pickleball courts with all that follows USTA guidelines. Up front, you have three indoor bathroom facilities, three accessed outside, reception, a small working space. And then in the upper right-hand corner is that community slash party room for events that could be programmed both inside and outside. We've spoken with Alan Lesher of YMCA of the Inland Northwest. He's very excited about this new opportunity for the kids within his program to come across the street, utilize this. We're also just, we know how appreciative everybody is of the Russell funds, but these opportunities for other community members to give and donate. So what we're calling this woods scrim, which is maybe we need a better term. But it's this, it's this wood wall that really is that warmth of wood celebrating kind of the past of sandpoint, both in the logging and the lumber industry. But how we could add donorship onto this and also into these benches in the landscape. And so again, it's amazing. And it's like, how do you keep that philanthropy kind of on display?
Well, the thinking with that was that's tying into, again, we have the funding for this building itself. That's where there is an opportunity for future donations and larger donations that could go towards an endowment fund that again supports the future operations, maintenance, capital improvements for this building. So the community has a building to enjoy for generations to come.
So this is kind of the real first impression as you approach the facility. And again, we think that awning and this donor wall really bring the scale down and make it a little bit more inviting than if you were to just have the sports flex facility. And so we're pretty proud of that. And also, how do we deal with stormwater in an artistic way that celebrates the place? Having some good discussions yesterday with the Traverse family too. We think there's an opportunity that we could tell even more stories within this facility with what we're setting up here. How could we acknowledge the importance of the namesake, but also acknowledge other aspects of this area? And so we're in the process right now of taking that information in and integrating it into this piece and future phases. So this is an image, I know that a lot of people are nervous about this building dominating the park. And what I think I want to say about the entire design team is we're with you. We don't not want to do that. But we are interested in this being a beacon to come to the park. But we also know that people probably want to look at the mountains more than our building. And so that's really why the strategy of having the short facade facing Pine Street. And also, I think moving this facility just west of the existing parking lots is better for the adjacent neighbors and the church. So this is just kind of give you a sense when you come in the facility. The interior of this is white. There's incredible amount of just kind of great lighting in here without the glare, the way the system is. All the lighting is up light. But you can start to see at the end of the gable end, that will be a translucent daylight that will also make it seem like you're not just within this facility. You don't know what time of day is, you can recognize kind of what time of day is. And to the left in this image really is just the small kind of admin check-in and party room area, community room. I'm going to turn it over to Mike, who we've done lots of projects together, ALS C and MTLA. And I think he's done an incredible job of collecting information, both for the comprehensive master plan and phase one. So I'll turn that over to Mike.
Thanks a lot, Troy. What I would say about the landscape is we're not done designing yet. So this is phase two, basically of the landscape. And then things are going to come forward. And so what you're seeing here is really the down in the bottom portion of it with the relocated play elements, this portion of the existing playground are going to be reutilized and immediately relocated as construction begins so that the playground can remain open, so that we have a relocated set of swings, which are the existing swings. We're taking it very seriously that we need to be very careful budget-wise. We have elements within the existing playground that we can reuse and relocate and immediately have them on site and have them open to the public. And then we can build on that for the future with the grant that both Jennifer and Maeve talked about. And so what you're seeing in the north portion of it, so the north is up. And so the gray bar on the, on the, on the side is the building. And so the dark gray is the building itself, the light gray is kind of the forecourt of the building and the connection directly from, so you can see that you can be on the, in the front of the building and see the playground. So you have this connection, plus you have the restrooms right there. So there's this really strong dynamic connection between the restrooms in the building and the playground. And we know how important it is to have restrooms close to playgrounds and especially splash pads. So that's one of the critical elements as we put this together. The other portion of it was that we needed to maintain operation of the existing baseball softball field. So within this space, getting the fire lane in, getting room for snow to fall off the building during the winter time and snow removal for the fire lane and molding all those together along with all the comments that we get from the public, including a whole bunch of great comments today. We created this framework that we'll move forward with, with what's up north, which includes sandpoint stories, which we believe is an opportunity to have some uniquely sandpoint elements. And one of the things we suggested on the, on the side is the bear in the attic, which is from the cover of the Patrick McManus book, The Bear in the Attic. And so is that going to be there? Maybe, maybe not. We're start, we're going to be starting that process when the grant comes through. And a lot of the thing, a lot of the conversation we had with folks today and kids, it's like, when we start this process, we want to sit down with kids and what do kids want to see in this playground? We've done other events where we have Play-Doh and it's like, make what you would like to play on, draw what you would like to play on. Let's see what we can get that's uniquely sandpoint, that is a, not just a, we picked a catalog off the shelf. We picked A B number 12 and we put it in here. That's not what we want to do. We have a grant that is sufficiently funded so that we can get something uniquely sandpoint and really custom that matches the character of the community. The splash pad, again, it's not going to be huge. It's not meant to be a water park for North Idaho. It's meant to be a splash pad to support the community in this and give little kids a chance to go and get wet and then go play. And if you ever watch kids in the splash pad, that's basically what they do. It's like a sprinkler in the backyard, they go get wet and then they go do something else and they come back. So that's the type of thing. And then into the woods is that transition from the sandpoint stories and into the woods and the hills and give you that kind of natural element as well. And then we've got a component called the rapids, which is another kind of interactive place where kids can float, you know, twigs down a little where, where kids can float, you know, twigs down a little, little stream. And so that would be part of the splash pad as well. So those are things that we, we have thought, and that's as deep as we've gotten. We'll have a whole process that we'll go through to detail the design of the playground with community input and integration down the road. Now I will point out that the existing shelter that we met under today is the brown score in the mill. So we're relocating that as well. Again, an important part of the existing park, great structure, uniquely sandpoint. We're going to reutilize it. It'll be kind of core so you can have birthday parties under it and, and continue to use that great shelter. So then this comes down to the detail and we haven't, we're, we're running as fast as we can to detail out the front, but the graphics that Troy and Gail and their team put together kind of give it, give you an indication what we would like to see in the front. And so there's a lot of tension between maintenance and designers. And, and, and so one of the things we've been working with, with the city's maintenance team is like, we need to make it so that it can be maintained. We need this landscape so it's not manicured landscape. It's got to have a full-time gardener there. It's going to be more natural looking. So I, I implore you all to bear with us that this is going to not be manicured. This is going to look more natural. We're going to integrate natural features and rocks and the stormwater is going to be going through there. And we're going to encourage kids to jump from boulder to boulder through the ornamental grasses and things. And so it's an interactive landscape that's going to get some abuse and it's going to look really natural. So that's, that's the direction we're going right now.
And then finally, this is the skate park dreamland. Can't be here tonight, but Dreamland are, they are consultants. They are also the consultants that built the original skate park. So this is the final full build out. If we were to have all the money that we need, which the estimate right now is about a million dollars for the entire 18,000 square feet. I just want to point out this portion on the end, we've got Pine Street on my left over here. So Pine Street over there, and it's looking towards the existing tennis courts. So this is the existing skate park right now. So for the money we have right now, we have $300,000 on the city side. The Bonner County Skate Park Association has fundraised 55,000. So that gives us a total pot of 355,000. So for that amount, we know we can get approximately double the square footage. We're not exactly sure what elements will go in there, but that is, this is really a, a scaling situation. We are not going to build this until spring of 2024. And that will, the idea behind that is to allow us to raise more money through the fundraising efforts. We're targeting around a $600,000 range and we don't have the phasing totally figured out yet. Obviously there's a lot of great things in the rest of the park and we're not ready to figure that out yet. And the reason really is that the other team is working really hard. And if you can kind of imagine and go back to those earlier slides, we are doing an integrated design. So if I dug a hole here, it's going to impact the playground. If the building does something or it goes up or down, it will impact this. And so it costs money every time I trigger another consultant to do a design. So they've come up with this big vision and what they can build out the entire facility for. And we've got that and it's going to get our juices flowing and start to open up our pocketbooks. But we don't quite know where this final phasing is going to land for 2024. And we've got time and similar to the playground, we're going to be able to have more interactive conversations with the skate community and the all-wheeled community and carry that conversation further. So that's, that's essentially it for the whole project. And with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Good evening and thank you. And thank you to the designers and the architects. And I want to recognize the Travers, the Gunters and the Stevens family that are here with us tonight. I know that you've engaged them. They're going to tell their father and grandfather's story far better than I. This is the reason why we're talking about this piece of property. And I'm coming from a Parks and Recreation background and I see a deep need and vision for some, for, for much in that space. And between dad Travers, grandfather Travers and Cotton Barlow to look at a landfill and have a vision for two men that were hardworking, that were dedicated to their family and dedicated to a, a scene addressing and fulfilling a need that they saw in our community. I see many parallels between what the Russell family, with their generous donation. I see the same parallels with the Travers family. If we lose the vision of this as a baseball field or a field that was a landfill that is now going to be the center of our town of recreation and play for many, many users. If we do not fully understand, embrace and fall in love with the Travers family and their vision, I'm going to have a real tough time with this. I appreciate the engagement. I appreciate the thoughtfulness of that donation wall. I saw what you guys had, were proposing. I would encourage you to continue to lean into. So we have some great families in this town and there are streets named after these families. There are buildings named after these families. This park that was again, once a landfill. So I get it that our soil might be a kind of a way, but we don't like being laughed at, that our soil is difficult to build on. Yes, it's sandpoint. It's ours, Chuck Slu. I cannot tell you the number of memories that were probably created in that space. So I'm just with the most respect, tread carefully. With, with that, I, I love this. And I hope that we can all embrace the vision that the elder Travers and the Barlos saw for field sports for our kids and families. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Um, Maeve, thank you for coming to leadership today and enlightening all of us. Could you tell me, I'm, I just want everyone to hear about the trees. When you told us about the trees and that you're going to, how you're going to utilize the trees.
Yes, absolutely, Councilor. The trees, so we will be ripping the Band-Aid off and we will be removing trees. I am the city forester and no one wants to lose trees more than me. It, it is sad, but we will be replacing every tree that we remove with three trees. And then in addition, the trees that we're removing are going to be reutilized by a local woodmill. And we're going to, we're going to make the wood benches that you saw. And I think that was probably Troy's idea. So this, these benches right here, it's a simple design. It pays homage to our vernacular, our character of our community timbers. And also there's opportunity to potentially use some rail reclaimed railroad materials as well. So I think that the team's done a superb job of thinking through every detail. I, when we started the project, we had a task for a building and it has grown into a monster. It's almost, we're at nine million, I think now with the playground pushing 10. So this project has really grown. And if you think back before that, I had 95,000 given to me in fall of 2021 by you all to start the skate park expansion. So I've been here less than two years and we are almost at what, almost 10 million for one park. And that is majority from Mr. Russell and his mom Jenny Russell. And it is because of their husband slash father who grew up here. And I would venture to guess that Mr. Russell, the original Mr. Russell probably played with the Travers family. Especially because I think Jim had some really great stories about his dad sketching the same kind of vision. And a lot of times, if you know how angels work, the messages come to you. And maybe this was all about aligning at the right time. I came here, I had no vision for this. I took this job because of all the amazing stuff in the watershed and the city beach project, because the city beach project and the downtown waterfront is what every designer would really want to work on. Who knew that this park would become my soul and this would become my family? And I just met the Travers family and I, I'm sorry, I couldn't be there today. But I'm very excited that you came to our last council meeting. I didn't know that you were here. I've been asking, I've been asking a lot, but there's only so much I can do with my capacity. And I have about four more things on the agenda tonight. So I'm going to stop talking so we can get out of here and go to bed. But I want you all to know that I'm defensive of my architects in every way, because trust me, they actually do live here in their own way because they all recreate here. And the state of Idaho does something called a SCORT plan. And of all the counties in Idaho, we in Bonner County serve more recreationalist than anybody else. But yet we don't invest in our recreation hardly at all. We've put a whopping 300,000 in a skate park that actually should cost 500,000. And we're getting it because Dreamland likes us, because they built the first one, because they want to see sandpoint succeed. Okay, that playground over there, the phase one, I care about that. I beat up my architects and my landscape architects to make that happen because I care. I don't want a kid to be without a swing ever. Not one week, it might be a few weeks. So we care, and even though we're not local or from here, I would venture to challenge all of you that we don't care because we do, we care tremendously. And with that, I just want to say thank you. This has been a project of my lifetime and I'm so excited to rip the Band-Aid off and get it built as fast as we can so we don't miss any seasons and we can all get out there and play and enjoy together. So thank you. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Not yet.
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment. I'm a basketball player, volleyball player, but I'm, I am thankful to see that it's specifically for just one or two sports. I think that's wise and I think trying to add too much would actually bring more harm than good. So even though I'm other sports, I think that's great and I look forward to future expansions. So good job.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Maeve, appreciate that. Madam Clerk, are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this matter?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, one moment. Teresa Stevens.
Hi, I'm Teresa Stevens from the city. I'm very nervous and I did not want to be first. And I forgot my glasses. I just want to say, I think these ideas are fantastic. It looks like it's going to be a beautiful building, beautiful park. I love everything about it, but I wanted to tell you what my dad planned. I'm not here because I'm a Travers. I'm here because I'm a citizen of this town and I care about it so much. I think so much is changing and it's just getting so busy and so crowded. And I don't want this park to get so busy and so crowded. The Bulldog Bench assisted with the concept of Traverse Park over 45 years ago. My dad's been gone for 40. It was a time when we had 50/50 tickets and cake, cake raffles. My mom would sell the hot dogs. We'd charge to get into the baseball park so we could help with taking care of it. We sold popcorn in the concession stand. Mom and dad would do the shopping for the concession stand. It was a small town. It was just an awesome place to be. We would host games to Washington and Idaho and Montana. And we'd just have a blast. We'd have cake raffles, we'd make the cakes ourselves and decorate them up. So the Bulldog Bench and dad and Cotton Barlow got excited about this new park and they wanted to be something simple, something beautiful. Just keeping the children in mind, we wanted to see the sky and the walking trails and the conifers and the deciduous trees. I think that what it is, is perfect, just the way it is. So I would just say, these fantastic ideas that you have, I love these ideas. I love this donation. I love everything about it, except the location. I think that if we had a space with more room, where there could be more parking and you wouldn't have to worry about snow falling off the biz, the building because there's space. I think that just getting away from that small spot for something so gigantic would be so great. I just would really encourage you to find another piece of property and, and let us enjoy Traverse Park the way it is because it's gorgeous. It's lovely. And that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Stevens. I'm sorry, was it Bolt?
Hi, I'm Kelly Bolt, city of Sandpoint resident. I own UCAN, which is a unique center for athletes of all needs. So we actually tend to all special needs people we can. Right now we serve 85 people a week, so I'm a big part of that community. And when I met Maeve and she kind of told me a little bit about this project, I just, I was really excited because I built that facility to make a play space. We have a 1,400 square foot play structure inside of that where we can play in the winter time, which is awesome. But it's great for kids to be outside. And with this park, I'm a mom of two little boys. I have a five-year-old, it's an atypical kid. And then I have a seven-year-old that is a very low functioning special needs child. And he is a rare chromosome deletion. So we have a lot of challenges with him, but I can never go to a park and have them play together. I'm either chasing that one around or trying to make sure he doesn't cut his legs or cut his hands. And my other one wants to play with me and wants to play with both of us. So it's just, it's kind of more stressful than it is exciting and it kind of takes away from that. So when I talked with Maeve about this, I of course was very, very excited. I'll try not to be emotional because this is, it is a very huge deal. And I know that this town, I mean, I've lived here about 11 years and I'm a big part of the community. And I love Traverse Park and I hope that, and it's such an amazing project that I just hope that we can all come together and realize that this is a huge, huge thing for the city. And it brings so much positivity and it brings, I don't think it's going to bring a ton of people in, but it's going to bring people together. Even having an adult changing table in the bathroom, I have to change my kid on the grass. He has diapers. So when you have a seven-year-old in diapers, either go to your car or you go, no one has a changing table. So even that changed. And there's handfuls of people that I work with every day that is in the same boat. And we have just in Lake Pondre School District, 15% of our kids have an IEP or a 504. I have over 35 kids in my classes every single week that are going to benefit from this. They don't have anywhere to go right now. They cannot utilize any space like this or play or interact or have the inclusivity that is really important, not for just the special needs kids, but atypical kids need to interact with these other kids too, because they learn so much from each other. And it's amazing to watch these kids in my facility interact with each other. And I'm just really excited and thank you guys for putting this together and putting money towards it. And, and I appreciate it. So thank you.
Thanks for those comments, Ms. Bolt, appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, I have a form here from someone named Julie. I don't have a last name, but Julie. Mr. Mayor, I have a form here from someone named Julie. I don't have a last name, but Julie. Dish Litvin. Monica Travers Gunter.
Monica Travers Gunner, for the record. Andy, thank you for those comments about our family. That was very special. Our family has been here since nineteen, the early sixties, nineteen sixty-two, sixty-three. There's, we're all still here. It's a crazy lot of Traverses running around this place, so I'm surprised that you didn't find anybody that knew us, but that's fine because everybody knows us. That's good. So our concern with, with my sister Teresa talked about the size of this building. Right now, there's no parking hardly when there's baseball games going on, soccer games, lacrosse games. They, there's no parking already. Now we're going to add this big facility and you say you're expanding the parking, but this big building comes clear out. I saw the red dotted lines today and it's like, it's taking a lot of the existing parking right now. So where is everybody going to park for this? We also have for the, the, I don't want to use the handicap. What's it called? The playground? Pardon? Inclusive. The inclusive playground is unbelievable. I came to the thing yesterday. We have, we had a little sister Patty. She was cerebral palsy, spinal bifida and hydrocephalus. She was in a wheelchair. She was expected to live a week. My mom changed her diapers. We changed her diapers. Still, she was forty-two years old and passed. This playground for her would have been absolutely amazing. We love the concept of this playground. It just needs to not be beside this big building. It's the, the, the building is a fantastic, I, we're friends with the Russell family. We know. We know them so well and why this building couldn't, this tennis facility, this is a baseball facility, always was going to be baseball outside, open sports. The outside tennis courts are fabulous. But why this big building when you drive into that parking lot and it's a beautiful building, don't get me wrong, but somewhere else that can be a tennis facility, a basketball, indoor basketball courts, a whole nother area. And there's a place on Baldi Road just after the road checks. There's eighty acres there that's perfect. Right now, it's a frisbee, frisbee court. Why we couldn't put this building on a piece of property like that and you'd have acres and acres and acres of parking and Travers Park could still be Travers Park with a wonderful playground. The playground is super, the building is super, but they, the building is just too big for this beautiful Travers Park. It's going to completely take away the aesthetics of Travers Park and the idea of the, of the open concept.
Mr. Travers Gunner, really appreciate those comments. Thank you.
John Travers.
Hello, John Travers, Bonner County. And apologize now for my speaking ability, but what you all did? Unbelievable, unbelievable. I love the, the park, the playground and such. I think we should have that playground all over this city. Every place, every place should have that playground. I'm with my sisters. I was going to start out with, I won't threaten anybody. But I'm with my sisters. I just think and it doesn't have to be my name on it. I don't, that matters to me nada. We are growing. This town is exploding. We need parks. We need this sitting next to a swimming pool, sitting next to basketball courts. We need places for all these people that are coming in here that are not used to the outdoors type of thing, but would go to this type of it. It's a sports complex. Well, it's tennis. It's not sports. It's tennis. And it should be put together with other buildings and such and a big, beautiful park with lots of room and I walked the print today and, oh my gosh, there's so little room left for people that are watching the softball games. If you go to the softball games, you'll see the people up on the hill and the kids playing on the we wish they'd be playing on that toy set, but it's crowded and now this big building is going to be there also. And it's just going to make it so difficult. I know we're probably too late. I know we're all that, but just want to put my two cents in worth and we should have been here a lot sooner, just to give my two cents then. It was a beautiful design and Troy took my idea about cutting the timber for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Travers, for those comments. Appreciate it.
Paul Rumore.
I'm Paul Rumore, twenty-three-year resident of Bonner County, property owner of forty-seven years in this county. I'm here to represent the tennis community. The tennis community includes the Sandpoint Tennis Association, which is affiliated with the USTA, United States Tennis Association, and also Sandpoint Tennis, which is the high school and middle school tennis program supplied by the Lake Ponderay School District. We have one thing to say. Thank you, family. What an incredible, kind and generous gift given to our community. That seems to be the way our community works by gift. I also want to take the opportunity to thank the city for working with the tennis community. Jennifer, Maeve, Jason's back there somewhere hiding out. They worked with us in a civil, forthright, collaborative fashion. When we first heard this project, our fear was the courts, the four courts that exist were where the building was going to be built. That in essence would have put the high school competitive team out of action for a year. When we expressed that to the city, the Parks and Rec, almost immediately, they saw the issue. They realize, and I realize, the city supplies the tennis courts for the schools. Thank you. Incidentally, you also supply it for me. I'm out of the city, as are many other tennis players. Thank you. And I do want to say one thing. We as an STA have cooperated with the city in the past to help fund court improvement and we do supply with labor, putting up nets, taking care of things. We want to continue doing this. As this program goes along, we want to help with the improvement of the existing courts and help funding and give labor. But I think in my finalizing these words, this is a really wonderful project for Sandpoint. I see that building being a gym in a crown and that crown is Sandpoint, the crown of Idaho. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rumore. Appreciate that.
Katie Cox.
Katie's left.
I think she went to feed her kids.
Tracy Schmidt.
Hi, I'm Tracy Schmidt, a county resident for twenty-three years. We also own a business in the city. And I just wanted to address the huge impact that the playground is going to have. Kelly mentioned that fifteen percent of Ponderay School District kids are in the special ed program. That's five hundred and thirty-four kids. And if you add in that each one of them probably has one or two or five siblings plus their parents and grandparents and friends, it's a huge impact to a community that otherwise doesn't, isn't able to access a lot of our playgrounds. And it's in a great location because a lot of those families have kids that also play sports on those beautiful fields. And so they're able to go watch their kids play sports and also allow their kids with special needs to interact with other kids in the community. So it's just a really great opportunity for all of these kids in our community to be able to play together.
Thank you, Miss Schmidt.
Mr. Mayor, Katie Cox is online just a moment.
Okay.
She said she was feeding her kids, by the way.
Katie, you should be able to talk now.
Okay, great. Thanks, you guys. I did have to go home and feed the kids, but I'm Katie Cox. I am a resident of Bonner County and happy to be here to speak tonight about this amazing project. I experience Travers all the time as a parent of three young girls. We've done soccer at Travers, lacrosse at Travers. I've spent hours at the playground at Travers, played softball at Travers, ultimate frisbee at Travers, tennis at Travers. And I have to agree that what a gift that wa, that was to the city and to all of its residents. But I also am a parent that spends a lot of time right across the street of Travers all year long. And I watch as Travers goes quiet in the winter. And I think about this building and I think what a wonderful opportunity for full utilization of this park in the wintertime. When there isn't the opportunities for our children to play and have a healthy outlet. If they can't get up to the ski hill, which many of our children cannot do and cannot afford to do, then the opportunities for recreation for our kids are super limited. I would also add that two years ago, I decided, being inspired by my daughter, to take up the sport of tennis and join the rec league. And for the first time ever in my life, start, began playing tennis. And I have to say that what I was amazed by is that as of, I think I'm forty-seven now, I am amazed by how much of a lifetime sport it is. I play next to a gentleman often who said that, I love what he says. He said, I took up tennis. I'm seventy-nine and I took up tennis nine years ago. What, what an amazing sport to be able to play for so long in your life and what a healthy outlet for not only our children, but our adults. And so I just want to say that I think the planning, the time that has been put into it, the thought in order to make sure that the scale feels right and make sure that there's a, still a space for the amazing playground and facilities. And I'm excited about the splash pad. I just applaud Maeve. I applaud the architecture team. And finally, I just want to share my gratitude to both the Travers and Russell family for these transformational gifts. So thank you. Thanks for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Appreciate those comments.
Rebecca Holland.
Oops, not reading. Good evening. There's no doubt that this is a gorgeous building. These architects have done a fabulous job. The, the all-inclusive play presentation yesterday was wonderful. There, what isn't there to love about all these kinds of things that we could bring to our community for our kids? I, the, the only thing, the only big issue as well as the Travers family brings to you and that I've brought to you primarily is location. And this has been a big open park. I've been over there the other evening watching two softball games going on with parents all around, two baseball games that, there was, the place was going off. The playground had probably about eighteen kids all climbing over it. The big open space between the playground and the park or the softball fields had about fifteen more kids playing tag. Out in front of it, a lady came in with her kids, two kids, and set up a little thing just to practice soccer. This is a neighborhood where most people don't have that kind of space to set up a little soccer thing in their backyard. This is their backyard for open play. And I think that's the only element that keeps getting missed here. Is that when this building goes in and all this other stuff gets organized around it, it really reduces that. Oh, and I forgot to mention, there was a dad outside over toward the maintenance building was throwing catch with two kids while obviously he had somebody in there playing softball. There's lots of people. It fills up. So it's almost like, wow, this is gorgeous. And if I've, in hearing that there's like, were other locations to be considered? Back there at, at the north, Northern Park, what it's called, with sixty parking spots back there that doesn't even hardly get utilized? And those fields could be fixed? I'll cut it off. That's been the only thing. That's been the pushback. And not to engage the community in these conversations has been my biggest issue all along. So thank you for your consideration on this.
Thank you for those comments.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Molly O'Reilly, you had signed up to speak. You've indicated an item ninety. I just want to confirm that was the item you wanted to speak on, or is it this? I wondered, okay.
Hi, Molly O'Reilly. I'm still a city resident. You've heard a lot of really important things and I'm going to focus on a couple of others. One is we've just dealt with a very contentious issue about our increase in vehicular use and over time and what that may mean for us as a community. So it's really important. The spot bus will stop at Division and Pine. Kids need to be able to get their bike off or walk from there. So you need lots of bike parking as close to the building as possible. If bike parking has the advantage, somebody is going to be more inclined to take their bike and probably you want another, more bike parking out near the playground. So I would encourage that and to make sure, it's, it's sad to put a building behind parking. It's something we've tried to get away from elsewhere, but I think it's going to happen this time. So make sure that the walking and biking to the building doesn't have to compete with the cars, that it's separated and very safe. So parents feel really safe having their kids go there and not have to have a car everywhere. And I'm delighted to hear that we're going to have natural looking landscaping. I'm, I hope our architects know, but I'll bet they don't, that Sandpoint produced, not the city, but the Kinniknik Native Plant Society has a book they can buy at any bookstore around or the museum, Native Plants of the Idaho Panhandle. Landscaping with Native Plants of the Idaho Panhandle. And it's got all our trees, our shrubs, our perennials, our ground covers, our flowers. I hope we see a whole lot of them there. Thanks much.
And they can go to Kinnik for some inspiration.
Yes, that too.
Thank you, Molly. Appreciate that.
Let me check for hands raised just a moment. I believe that is all who wish to speak on the side of Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you for those comments. At this point, we're going to take a five-minute break before continuing on with the public forum. All right, we are reconvening at, we'll say eight oh six. We'll now proceed with the public forum portion of the meeting, which allows the public the opportunity to address myself and counsel regarding items listed on the consent calendar or on any topic not listed on the agenda. If anyone here in chambers wishes to speak now during the public forum or during any other portion of the meeting, you must complete a public comment forum available on the table by the front door and hand it to the staff at the back of the table. Excuse me. If you're on Zoom, if you're on Zoom and wish to participate, wish to speak during the public forum, please raise your hand on Zoom at this time. To accommodate those who wish to speak on general items during the public forum, as well as those who wish to speak on specific business items on our agenda, a total of twenty minutes will be dedicated to the public forum now at the beginning of the meeting. If you'd like to speak and did not have an opportunity to do so, we'll provide that opportunity by reopening the public forum at the end of our regular agenda. I ask for your attention, please, as I recite the rules and procedure for public comment during public forum, as well as for other opportunities for public comment during the meeting. During public forum, council may not hear comments or take testimony, take testimony on any planning and zoning matter that is before the city or is known to be a likely application. Such testimony is allowed only during properly noticed public hearing. Issues regarding the performance of city employees constitute matters that must be discussed only in executive session and are not appropriate during the public portion of the meeting. Matters that have been previously heard and decided by council may be determined to be inappropriate for to be inappropriate for public forum as well. Citizens may use this time to request that items be placed on a future agenda for further discussion. Those in attendance are not to disrupt this meeting or the business at hand that is being taken up by the council. Disruptive behavior includes clapping, disruptive noise, and comments or exclamations from the audience. Comments shall not be personally derogatory, nor shall they be personally directed to any individual, organization, or business. Public, public comment opportunities during meetings are for comments only. Do not direct any questions to myself or council or to staff and do not approach the dials. Also, please do not approach staff up here at the front tables as this disrupts the meeting. You may inquire of staff at the back table in the back of the room who can provide assistance if needed. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. When it's your turn to speak, please state your name and whether you reside within the city of Sandpoint. And, okay. That concludes the rules of the public forum. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone who's signed up to speak?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Amelia Boyd.
Amelia Boyd, city resident, and this will be the last time for today, two for two. I just wanted to tell Maeve how appreciative and how wonderful that presentation was yesterday. And especially having Jill here. I think there's a lot taken for granted that able-bodied people do not realize. And so it was a great opportunity to take part in the, being in a wheelchair at Travers Park at the playground. It took me 20 minutes to get through the woodchips to the swing and then out away. So it gave me a huge appreciation of what 15% of our, you know, more or less population would have to go through. So I just wanted to convey the positivity that I felt as a citizen of the city and what Maeve is passionate about and trying to make available to not only our kids, but seniors and everything. So a step in the right direction that I hope that, well, actually I'm confident you guys will continue on. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boyd, for those comments. Appreciate it.
There is no one else signed up, but I don't see any hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that concludes the public forum portion of our meeting this evening. We'll now proceed with the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is $1,025,226.49, reflecting $229,838.44 for regular payables and $795,388.05 for payroll. Does council have any questions? Are there any items council wishes to remove from the consent calendar? Seeing none, I would entertain the consent calendar be approved or moved. It's been moved in second. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Groth?
Yes.
Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing on an appeal of the denial of a short plat application to subdivide a parcel at 1300 Garden Street into two lots. In accordance with city code, the application was processed administratively. Following this process, I ultimately denied the application. Please note that as the presiding officer, as the presiding officer, I will proceed with facilitating the hearing, but I will not otherwise participate. In other words, I will not be a tie-breaking vote if it comes to that. For the record, a notice of public hearing was published in the Bonner County Daily Bee, the city's newspaper record, on April 25, 2023. I'll now recite the order and procedure for the public hearing. One will be, first will be explanation of the subject of the public hearing by city staff. Second will be presentation by the appellant or their representative. Please note that council members should address their questions to the applicant or the appellant, rather, at that time. Third will be opening of the public hearing, at which time the public may provide testimony. The order of those providing testimony will be as follows. First, those who are in favor of the appellant. Second, those that are neutral. And third, those that are opposed. The appellant's rebuttal testimony will follow, at which time final questions may be asked of the appellant. Please note that if new facts are elicited during rebuttal, the public will be given an opportunity to comment on any new facts. Fifth, the close, the public hearing will be closed. And sixth, the council will deliberate. And no new information may be provided after the hearing has been closed. Questions will be directed only to city staff during deliberation. For the record, any written comments received prior to agenda posting were included in the meeting packet or otherwise provided to council. Before we proceed, I'd like to ask for confirmation from each council member that you have had no ex parte contact or conflict of interest as pertains to this matter.
No.
No.
Mr. Mayor, I drove to the property and ran into the appellant today. We discuss not, discussing about the actual case this evening. I did ask for permission to walk the property and to see the edge of the boundaries of the property. And I don't think that I'll have any bearing on my decision this evening.
Thank you for that disclosure and let the reflect, let the record reflect that the other council members denied any ex parte contact or conflict of interest. I'll now yield the floor to city planner Amy Tweak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council member. Again, this is an appeal of the dial of a short plat at 1300 Garden Street. A little background on the property. The property is at the end of the dead-end street, which is Garden Street. The lot, existing lot is about 21,000 square feet and it is in the RM residential multifamily district. The request initially made was for variance through the Planning and Zoning Commission. However, due to the non-compliance with titles eight and 10, in addition to title nine, the variance request was not heard. A short plat application was then submitted to create two lots from the existing parcel. A short plat is a land division of four or fewer parcels and it is regulated by Title 10, Chapter 2 of the Sandpoint City Code. Again, that's administratively reviewed and decided through a written reason statement by the mayor. Pursuant to Section 10 to 1, a short plat decision may then be appealed to city council. Regarding the property code requirements, the RM district requires 37 and a half feet of street frontage for a single dwelling unit. For an additional lot to be created, it must have frontage on a public street. Lots at the end of a dead-end street must provide an adequate turnaround. And short plats are required to provide public dedication and improvements that are required under Title 10, Section 1. In reviewing the request, again, excuse me, the existing parcel is non-conforming to the required lot frontage as it only has 29 feet of frontage on Garden Street where 37.9 feet are required. Excuse me. The proposed short plat would create a lot showing here Lot 1 that has no frontage on a public street. And the proposed short plat does not provide a turnaround required by Section 10, 16A6 and the International Fire Code. Solutions to create a legal lot that were presented to the applicant were to dedicate an additional four feet north of the existing unimproved right-of-way as a minimum width for fire apparatus access road, which would be a total of 20 feet. Improvement of the frontage to meet the zoning code minimum street frontage and creation of an IFC compliant turnaround.
Mr. Mayor, Amy, while, while we have you on this slide, do you mind if you, would you mind taking your cursor and just kind of highlighting some of those requested improvements? Where is the four-foot dedication that you're describing? Where would the IFC compliant turnaround be required to go? If you don't mind just showing us with your.
Or what I tried to indicate here with the red line, the yellow line is the property line. This is trying to show about four feet. It's not to scale, but it would be four feet along this property line. This is existing 16 feet, which would provide 20 feet total right of way. And then what had been discussed was a potential turnaround that would split the lot. But as discussed in the staff report, pending the actual, what is actually built on that lot is when the best time to determine what the actual turnaround would be. But it would need to, to provide turnaround so that there could be access to both Lot 1 and Lot 2.
Thank you. I have a follow-up question. Would the dedication of that four foot of additional right-of-way resolve the issue with regards to the 37 and a half foot minimum frontage? On, would that essentially extend Garden Street out to the end of the lot? Is that what we would be doing?
The right-of-way, what had been discussed was making the improvements as far as we needed pending what was, if it was a single-family lot, having the, the extension of the road, the 37.9 feet.
37.9 feet.
Right, to the improvement and then does, again, pending what the actual construction was, what the turnaround would need to be.
Okay. So I don't, I'm not sure that answered my question. The, one of the problems is the, the required minimum frontage in this zone to a public street.
Right.
I don't know if I heard an answer to that. If, if, if the four feet were dedicated with Lot 1 in this subdivision, then meet that minimum required frontage to a public street?
To have required frontage, you have to have the improvements to the lot.
So, okay, so no, in the short term. But in the long term, if a building permit were to be issued, then those improvements would be required and then yes?
Correct.
Okay.
The application as submitted was processed at the request of the applicant. A recommendation for denial of the short plat due to the non-compliance with city code was provided to the mayor on January 25. And the mayor's reasons, reasoned written statement for application denial was sent to the applicant on February 1st, which is then now appealed to city council. With the proposed short plat, the appellant is requesting a waiver from Section 10, 17P that provides construction standards, including frontage requirements of curb and gutter for stormwater management and sidewalks. Relief from Section 10, 16A3 that requires consistency with the zoning frontage for all lots in the RM zone and 10, 16A6 that requires a turnaround on dead-end street. However, Title 10 does not provide waivers from 10, 16. Specifically with regard to the turnaround, city council does not have the authority to simply not require a turnaround. But likely the appropriate, the appropriate turnaround pending the construction is best determined at the time of building permit. In deciding the appeal, city council must take one of two actions. Approve the appeal with clarification on city council's authority to deviate from the International Fire Code or deny the appeal, which would affirm the mayor's decision and deny the application as per. And this is just an illustration on the left is the short plat. And on the right is an approximation of what the short plat would look like on the ground. And that is all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you for that. Does council have any questions? Okay, next will be the appellant's presentation. As a reminder, council should address their questions to the appellant at the time of their presentation.
Mr. Mayor, city council? I'm impressed with you guys tonight. This is my first time in front of you and it's getting late, so I'll make this brief.
We're just getting started.
My name is Nate Holland. I was born and raised in Sandpoint, Idaho. I have owned and operated a local business within city limits since 2010. My wife and I are the owners of 1300 Garden Street. I'm asking city council to grant my short plat application to divide 1300 Garden Street, currently a half-acre lot that sits at the west end of the dead end of Garden Street. My short plat proposes to divide the half-acre lot into two quarter-acre lots with a simple flagpole lot to provide access to both lots from my current access of Garden Street. Out of the 13 lots that currently use Garden Street for access, 1300 is the only half-acre lot. The remaining 12 are all quarter-acre lots. The Holland Short Plat only conforms to the existing lot size of Garden Street. The city's planning administration has denied my variance request in 2021 and my short plat application in 2023, unless I extend Garden Street an additional 155 feet through my property to its western boundary and provide a fire turnaround, all at my cost. I've gathered estimates for the cost to engineer, excavate, tree removal, pave, curb, the 155-foot street extension, plus a hammerhead fire turnaround. The total estimated street construction as of last summer was 107,000. I've also estimated the cost of the 3,673 square foot of land that I would need to dedicate for this street extension at $67,440. All said and done, the street extension project would cost $175,000, only to create a $150,000 to $200,000 lot. That simply doesn't make sense to me. I currently can pull a BERT building permit, build a single-family home and ADU on the property without having to foot the 775,000 bill to extend the dead-end street 155 feet to create another dead-end street. For nearly three years, I've worked with the city of Sandpoint and Whiskey Rock Planning and Consulting to find a solution to divide a half-acre lot at the end of a dead-end street into two quarter-acre lots. Much like the dead-end street at the end of Garden Street, I too have run into many dead ends, which brings me in front of city council tonight. I understand that there is city code that needs to be followed. And I also understand that cit, that city council has the power to override city code when necessary. 1300 Garden Street is a unique property parcel, a half acre at the end of the dead-end street that doesn't conform to existing code when common sense is applied. I'm asking city council to please apply common sense to your decision on my short plat application. My proposed short plat aligns with city's comp plan, aligns with city's desire for infill. It's an efficient use of land and addresses our current housing demand. Passing my short plat application would allow me the financial freedom and flexibility to be able to build a home without spending 175K in construction and, and on a city street. The lot divide would also allow me and my family flexibility in the future to sell one or both of the lots. I don't plan on selling either lot. It's just allowing my family to have flexibility in the future. Thank you for your time and consideration. Please vote to support the Holland Short Plat. Jeremy Grimm of Whiskey Rock is gonna continue with further information. Thank you.
Thank you, May and Council, Jeremy Grimm for the record, representing Mr. Holland. Not in a legal perspective, I am not an attorney, just for the record. Here to talk about some of the technical aspects of this request. As you can see, right in front of you is the subject parcel. You can see the north portion of Garden Street there highlighted in yellow with the street frontage that currently provides access to this lot. It should be known, this lot is legally non-conforming because it's substandard for several reasons. It was created and residual of the plat to the east and because it doesn't meet those standards. Typically, the property owner has the right to continue to use it as a nonconforming lot. Tonight, we're seeking a city council waiver through the approval of this appeal specifically. Ten one seven, which talks about the general requirements for development in the city. And it clearly states all development when the city shall meet the following requirements unless waived in writing. So why does this provision code exist? Because the world and the city code is far from perfect. And this gives a little bit of flexibility at times when flexibility is needed. There's another provision that gives you the ability to make some waivers. Ten one seven P where the entire existing street is unconstructed or unpaved such as this case. And it would be inequitable to require the owner to construct or pave it. The owner. Dot 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 may be allowed to accept an L I D for street improvements at some future date in lieu of construction of the street. And that's important because in the future of the city as ever going to continue Garden Street. Mister Holland and Mrs. Holland would enter into a L I D where that cost is shared proportionally across all benefiting parties. I know it's been a long night, but I need to walk you through the the history here because it's been an even longer history. In fact, this is the longest application that I've ever had in my professional planning career. It started back in September first, two thousand and twenty. When email clarifying what was required to Amanda Wilson stated absent of any variance, right of way standards are not flexible. October seventh, a month later, working on more details from Darren Fluke, your interim planning director at the time, or contract planner. He said confirmed, in this case, absent of a variance, right of way standards are not flexible. So in December, we applied for a variance and we applied for the variance before doing the short plat. Because it's expensive to put a short plat together. We wanted to know that we had this variance before we spent more money. So we applied, waited, February fifteenth, the day before the hearing on the variance, the staff reports was sent to me. Twenty four hours before the hearing. It's kind of untypical. And in that staff report, I was very surprised to read, the commission does not have the statutory authority to grant variances to Title seven public ways, et cetera. Oh, snap. But you've been telling us for the last six months that we need a variance. But now what should we do? Since all of a sudden, six months into this, you're telling us a variance isn't applicable. Okay, the city was very responsive. The next day, Darren Fluke sent me an email February sixteenth saying ten one seven allows for waiver of requirements. This parcel is a good candidate for waiving the street extension requirements. Sidewalks would not be required because the code specifically contemplates that the continuation of a sidewalk. And since there are no sidewalks existing on Garden Street now, one would be no now none would be required in this case. He further stated in that email that typically the subdivision ordinance has a mechanism built in to allow for waivers or modifications in situations where. A literal interpretation is not practical. In this case, given the unlikely eventual eventuality that garden will ever extend further to the west beyond the. The parcel in question, a good compromise would be the construction of a turnaround. Okay, so the city was again very responsive team meeting two days later. We had a pre app about the short plat. Based on Darren's comment. Oh, great. So just to turn around that that makes sense. We can ask for these waivers. Mister Holland secures a surveyor. We do the the plat, the pre plat, preliminary plat for this parcel submitted. Application on August twenty first. And in that application, based on the previous correspondence from the interim planner. Specific, we we requested these waivers, the waiver to build the street, the waiver to dedicate land, the waiver to do curb gutter and improvements. And we were always okay with doing a fire turnaround. So then five months later, after further discussions. That application was sent back, revise and resubmit, basically rejected. Saying it's not compliant with road frontage, street extension, continuation of street. These are the exact things we asked for in the waiver that we were thought told that, well, you can apply for a waiver. And I agree, I participated in the writing of some of that code. And that's exactly what it's there for. In that February eleventh correspondence, Amy said that alternatively, if you choose not to modify the plot, please notify me. And they'll proceed with the processing of the application. So we had some more discussions with the city. And then on April fifth, in the letter on April fifth, the planet, the planner Amy submitted a. Basically a staff report saying this is what's required. Garden Street shall be extended, dedicated to the western boundary of the line. The right away shall be improved asphalt paving. To achieve a minimum frontage requirements of thirty seven point five feet and then a seventy foot leg for fire turnaround. The total right away asphalt with shall be twenty feet. And sort of what she just explained. Stormwater plan, the right away shall be adjusted to include curb and gutter and Title seven. Sidewalk improvements may be on private property. So if you want to give more land, you can put them on your private property or with an easement. Or by wanting the right away further. So and I'm almost on the history here. Mister Holland and I talked, no, we didn't agree to that. It seemed inequitable to make the Holland's correct and existed deficiency on Garden Street, the dead end. Amy then denied the application, saying it was noncompliant with city sampling code. We appealed that to the administrator. The administrative decision, the mayor, as he stated, affirmed the decision to deny it February first, two thousand and twenty three. About PSP twenty one oh oh six. So we then appealed to council. Thirty two months and a hundred and forty five emails later to build a house in Sandpoint. Or to make a lot or split a lot. And again, sorry, that was a lot, but it's vital that you under understand the journey that we've been on. So moving forward, I want to keep this really simple. The Holland's own a relatively large parcel on existing dead end street that is noncompliant and deficient. Here is a view of Garden Street. If you haven't been out there, this is the end of Garden Street. That's Mister Holland's property straight in front of us. Here's a view it in the winter, the city. Understandably, but probably not legally is dumping snow on it and using it as a snow storage area without an agreement. When you look at Garden Street extended, you can see that yellow arrow, there is a building in the alignment. And I think that's why Mister Fluke suggested that it's unlikely that Garden Street will ever be continued to division. So the Holland's may by right right now construct a new single family dwelling unit on this legally nonconforming parcel. No street curb gutter sidewalks, well sidewalks, but no street curb gutter stormwater, et cetera, dedication of land. So this is hypothetically what they could do today without these exactions. Build a house in that yellow square. And the Holland simply desire to split this large parcel into two to create infill housing in an area that's efficiently serviced by city services. As is called for and supported by the comprehensive plan. So this is the short plat that was submitted. The blue lot would represent the new lot or one of the two new lots. And then the green is the eastern half. And there on the south, you see that double end arrow. That is a flagpole easement to access lot one per city of Sandpoint code allows flagpole lots to be created. Whether that's part of lot one or lot two is up for debate, but that is the proposed solution that we felt was in keeping with code. Basically met the standards, but did require some waivers. So in order to do this, the city is currently requiring about a hundred and seventy four of land dedication and improvements. Why? To correct efficient existing deficiencies on Garden Street. There's no I F C turnaround. You're asking for the Holland's to create one where none exists today, to prepare for the eventual continuation of Garden Street despite buildings being in the way. To address perceived stormwater concerns where none exists today. Instruct to pay for sidewalks where none exists today, a hundred and fifty five feet of them. And provide access and meet lot frontage requirements of code despite this being a unique lot deserving consideration for a waiver. Based on the current market trends, it's likely this lot would sell for about a hundred and seventy four thousand or equal to the cost of land dedication improvements. Which is not financially rational to the Holland's or hopefully anyone else sitting at the dais. The inflexible application of code is preventing infill opportunities. The intensity use and access to the property would not be materially different than if the Holland's constructed a single family home and A D U. So we're basically talking semantics. They could build a single family home, potentially an A D U today, have two folks living there. Versus splitting a lot and building two single family homes. I just wanted to show that the existing substandard fire truck turnaround seems to be functioning very well as the fire department uses it to turn around. On April seventeenth. So some concluding remarks. The subject parcel is located on a dead end street lacking an I F C compliant turnaround. Why is it the Holland's responsibility to cure this existing deficiency? They can build a single family dwelling and A D U on the property as it is configured today with no improvements or land dedication. The characteristics and intensity of use resulting from a lot split or a short plat are no different than what is entitled to the Colin Holland's today. We are concerned that the exaction of land and dedication. And cost of improvements are not proportional to the impact of the lot split. The nexus between the exaction. And the impact seems extraordinarily lacking. Council does have the authority to waive certain standards for for Sandpoint city code ten one seven. And the Holland's are agreeable to providing an I F C compliant turnaround on their property. Last slide. So what we are requesting today, in the event you were so moved. Is to move that standpoint city council affirm the appeal of denial of file PSP two one oh oh six. And confirm that the subject parcel is in fact unique due to the location on an existing deficient street. And that is stipulated the requirements to the dedication of additional right of way, construction of curb and gutter sidewalk and other improvements. Are not justified for this parcel based on the evidence provided today. Further, I move to direct city staff to waive these related provisions and standards in accordance with Title one seven of Sandpoint city code. So in a nutshell, the Holland's are happy to build a I F C turnaround via an easement between these two lots if it's approved. And what they're really concerned about, I think I've made clear, is the cost and the inexorable responsibility to cure. And extend a deficient street. With that, I gladly take any questions you have.
Yeah, Jeremy, I just want to make sure I understand. The the cost of the turnaround was going to be one a hundred and seven thousand.
The hundred and seventy four thousand is includes the extension dedication of land.
Right.
The extension of Garden Street to the west. Curb gutter asphalt of Garden Street, that extended portion.
But you said you're okay with the the fire lane. How much would that?
The city's been very agreeable on that and they've said that we can, we don't have to asphalt that. We can just build it to a compaction standard of, was it seventy five thousand pounds? I think.
Okay.
So that the Holland's are, you know, think is is fine. It would be an easement on their property, not a dedication of land, but the fire trucks would have the right to go in and turn around in EMS.
I just want to make sure I understood that. Thank you.
Miss Mayor.
Yeah.
Couple of questions. You keep referring to the right that the Holland's currently have to build a single family home on this property and possibly an A D U. If a single family home were built, isn't there already an A D U on this property? Is the existing structure is the are? Is would it be within code to build two new structures on this property currently?
If if Mister Holland were to scrape these bill, the bill, the the storage unit that's there. He could build a single family home and likely an A D U on the property.
Okay.
Per per standard residential lot.
I don't know, maybe my next question is for Amy, but I'll put it to you while I have you. This is multi-family zoned. So what about the current ability to build multi-family on this property? On 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 one hand, it seems like zero multi-family units are allowed on this property because it doesn't meet the minimum lot front requirements. Is that your understanding?
The the the, yes, the minimum is fifty feet and then you get additional. I mean, in theory, this parcel could have up to ten. And then if you use the cottage provisions, you could double that. So it could support much higher density.
It just seems to me like dedicating four feet of additional right of way would allow you to build up to ten units on this property immediately. Because you'd be needing the hundred and fifty foot frontage requirement. So it seems to be a great increase in property value potentially for resale. By dedicating four feet of right of way to the city. Well, in such, insofar as you can go from building one dwelling unit to up to ten dwelling units on this property.
Your logic is absolutely correct, but in doing that, it requires the construction of a half street asphalt curb gutter.
At the time of the building permit being issued, which a developer who's looking at building ten multi-family units probably wouldn't balk at a hundred thousand dollar curb improvement project.
You know, I I don't disagree with you. You know, Mister Holland, that's he's not a multi-family developer. He's just looking for the optionality to do what he's. Generally allowed to do on his properties, have the same density on that property today without having to commit to doing. Significant land dedications, improvements, et cetera. I think if the the situation you described were to come to fruition, the city would require that as part of a multi-family building permit.
Any other questions for the appellant?
Not really questions, but just a statement. So this is a. Hi, thanks for being here. I appreciate that this is a problematic piece of property. And I'm I'm curious if the previous owner expressed to you the reasons why maybe. Something else hadn't been built. I did, and I'm not in inferring like a buyer beware, but if there was a conversation that, hey, you know, we got a storage. Because I think that there used to be a guy that had like arcade storage in that spot at one time.
You're you're correct. It was Russ Brisboy.
Yeah.
Where the the shop is is existing. The property to the north was his uncle's and he built the shop out the back, had that property. Obviously had a lot line adjustment and and then held that property. For I I don't know how long, but for a while. And that's who I bought it for from.
But the 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 challenge here, and I didn't even think about this one until council person welcome brought it up. Because it is problematic, it is dead end. And because, you know, there's some snow removal issues, I'm sure some other issues. The the neighbors in this area have its challenges and then putting a, I'm not saying that you would do this, I'm not. The a ten unit, ten more units back there. That makes that's building on top of an already existing problem. So this is me just kind of thinking out loud a little bit. I want you to be able to build whatever it is that you want to build within. The rules that we have and what we're dealing with is that these are the rules that we have and. Is the challenge for the neighbors for you. Because again, I want you to be able to build what you want to build on your property because I mean, that's what we do. Thanks for listening.
Commissioner Groch just to answer, respond to that. We're not talking about building ten units right now. We're talking about. A lot split that would allow the equivalent of what could be built there today, which is two lots, two single family homes. I would. We'd be. That well, the city code would capture many of these concerns about multi-family at the time of building location site plan review. But for the purposes of today, we're just talking about. By drawing a line down the middle of this lot, we're effectively triggering a lot of improvements in land dedication.
Right. And to hear that, I understood. And I, it's been my experience that our staff works really diligently and hard with our citizens and future builders. That there's some significant challenges. That's why it's in front of us here today. So as much as you're. Challenging me not to speculate what could potentially happen in the future. I'm not going to speculate that our staff didn't do the right job with why it's here in front of us today.
Yeah, and just final, not not to debate you, but if you look in the staff report, staff's pretty clear that. When you talk about. Ten one seven, they say that they don't have any criteria of when to apply these these waivers. And that's one of the problems is it comes to you for that criteria and determination. I honestly believe if if they felt that they had that criteria and could do it, they probably would have done it here. But they kept saying, this is the standard. And I kept saying, well, you can waive the standard. They said, only council can do that. How do you get to council? We have to deny it. You have to appeal it and then we can have this discussion.
Mister Mayor.
Yeah.
Jeremy, in your presentation, you talked about. Maybe it was Nate about applying common sense in the case of a waiver in a situation like this. I appreciate that. And and I feel like. If I I feel like there's a little bit of ambiguity in in your narrative that was written. That we read in preparation for this meeting. You talked about protecting the value of your family asset for your children and for your generations and things, future generations and things like that. And I certainly respect that, but. Common sense tells me that a four foot dedication of right of way would drastically increase the value of your asset. If your intent is to pass it on to your children potentially to sell to a future developer. Because you're suddenly taking land that is not meeting. You know, standards for development of multi-family and making it with a four foot dedication up to a development standard. That would allow a developer to come in and buy that for a much higher price than what you could possibly sell it for subdividing it as a flagpole lot. In my estimation. So common sense to me says four feet is a pretty small amount of land you're you're dedicating. But it could have a dramatic increase in this resellable value and you don't have. But it could have a dramatic increase in this resellable value, and you don't have to make any of those improvements per the. Language in our proposed resolution tonight. Until a building permit is is requested, so I guess I'm asking you, if if we're being asked to apply common sense. There should just be some like honesty and transparency here, do you want to build on this lot for your family, or is you're interested in protecting the value of your asset for your kids? So that it can be sold to a developer in the future.
The way the way I understand it is it's no longer four-foot dedication. It's it's constructing guarding street, the width of Garden Street. Which is my twenty twenty-six feet of frontage. It would be twenty-six feet of dedication all the way to my western boundary. So that's way more than four feet. And to.
That's not what we were told, it was the currently, the the right of way is sixteen feet, the minimum standard is twenty feet, so it's a four-foot dedication. Your short plat included a twenty-six-foot easement for a driveway to whoever builds on the lot, lot one. But a four-foot easement is all that's being asked for from the city. And and granting that to the city or giving that to the city would then. Bring this lot into conformance for. That just lot one alone, you could have a four. Unit multi-family development there, which when a developer goes to build a four-unit multi-family development. You know, a hundred thousand dollar curb installment installation isn't a big deal to that developer.
Yeah, I I agree with that, I I'm. I'm unaware if I'm offered that four-foot dedication and they'll draw the line.
Okay.
And Commissioner Walker, I just. It is not clear to me, you could check with your staff. That a plaque can be recorded unless it meets the standard, which is to have a constructed, completed. Portion of a street, so it's not just the dedication. It's the curb gutter asphalt, as was highlighted in the April fifth letter and is highlighted up there and. Top right there, Garden Street right away, extended to the western boundary. Asphalt paving per etc, so. There is a substantial cost even to get this to the final plat for Mr. Holland. That. I think future developers would be more than willing to participate in that. But. Just to split a lot at this point seems like it's a great exaction.
This isn't the proper time to engage counsel, correct?
Stuff. No, yeah, you can, you can answer the question of staff, but I I would just, if if you, if you can wait, I mean, here's the thing, now's the time to ask questions of the opponent, so if you have. Any more questions for the appellant, let's get them out now and then.
To be fair to them, and I don't think there's rebuttal, right? They don't have a chance to rebuttal.
They will, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's, I just want to make sure.
All right, thank you for that presentation, appreciate it.
Thanks so much.
So we will now prepare to proceed with the public hearing, please note that public hearing is for comments only. Do not address any questions to councillor, myself, or to city staff. If council members have questions for the person testifying, they should ask those questions at the time of their testimony. For those participating on Zoom, you'll need a working microphone on your phone or computer to speak. If you wish to speak in favor or neutral or opposed, I will call for testimony on each and you will raise your hand on Zoom at that time. When your name is called, you will see a prompt on your screen asking whether you would like to unmute. Then you'll need to unmute yourself in order to be heard. Those here in chambers who'd like to speak, if you've not already signed up, you'll need to complete a sign-up form in the front of the room. By the front door. And hand it to the staff at the back of the table. There are checkboxes on the form where you will need to indicate whether you wish to speak in favor or neutral. Or are opposed to the request. Please check the appropriate boxes that pertains to the request, do not approach the dais. If you have any written materials for council, please hand them to staff at the back table. Please ensure that your name is included on the form. Those in attendance are not to disrupt this hearing, as a reminder, disruptive behavior includes clapping, disrupted noise and comments or exclamations from the audience. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes unless if there is a question from council to the speaker, I will allow. More time to for the speaker to answer council questions. Madam Clerk, is there anyone who would like to testify in favor?
Mr. Mayor, no one in the room has signed up to speak on this matter. If there's anyone on Zoom who wishes to testify in favor, if you'd raise your hand at this time, please. There are no hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, is there anyone who would like to testify who is neutral?
No, Mr. Mayor.
And is there anyone who would like to testify who is opposed to the?
Mr. Mayor, would you have a hand raised, I'll check to see if it was neutral or. Dig Krismer? Dig Krismer?
Yes, hi, thank you. Um, so thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Nate is our direct neighbor to the west, we live at one, two, three, four Garden Street. My concern comes into the statement that was made about not being efficiently served for this neighborhood. I when I bought the my house and my property in two thousand nineteen, I was aware of the proper property next to me could be developed and have houses built on it. Which in and of itself, I have absolutely no issue with. The need to have housing makes sense to me, that property was open to to have development, I don't have an issue with that. What I am concerned about and what I have chatted with my neighbors about is this, that question of not efficiently served. Unfortunately, with the way that the street is currently being an awkward dead end, and I don't know. As well as Jeremy Grimm, the historical context of all of it. This street is, it was a cluster in terms of snow removal, fire truck turnaround, service, service truck turnaround. Everything in general, and unfortunately for Nate, that seems to be, it it's his property. In historically, in the years prior to that purchase, there was a right of, unofficial right of way that the neighborhood was able to use. Which made it possible for those trucks to to turn around and depart Garden Street in a good fashion. I know that it, you know, Nate's property. There's a lot there and I get it. I'm opposed to this in the sense that we need to figure out a solution to this problem in order for the entire neighborhood to go forward. Because the code exists in this city that we have to to make certain developments. Be it stormwater sidewalks or so forth, going with those development proposals. And I, that has to be addressed on Garden Street, even though we're an awkward dead-end street in the middle of town that no one's paid attention to for years. Going forward, if I was to do any changes to my home, I would be required to adhere to city code, and that just seems to be standard across the board. Again, I'm not opposed to Nate developing or having other properties, other homes or A D Us on the property. But we need to figure out that this street can then be efficiently served for all the neighbors that live on Garden Street. And that city council, that's up to you, so I yield my time.
Thank you, Ms. Krismer, appreciate that. Madam Clerk, is there anyone else who would like to speak who is opposed?
Mr. Mayor, I do not see any other hands raised.
Okay, and there's no one else here who would like to speak on this matter? Okay, at this point. I guess I didn't ask counsel if he had any questions for the appellant, if she's still on, and. Do you have any questions, we can.
Maybe more of a comment, Mr. Mayor, I think the to her statement that she would have to conform to the standards, I think the difference is that this property is. From what I understood from Jeremy's presentation, just not your typical property like hers might be. So just.
Yeah, fair enough. So at this point, we'll allow the appellant the opportunity to rebut, so Mr. Graham.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members, just three, three things to point out here. First, the comments, I believe, for it was Dig who made those comments. I think what you heard was her confirming that this is an existing deficiency. And again, going back to my point. Why should one property owner be responsible for correcting an existing deficiency that was? Just recorded into the record. A more appropriate tool might be a local improvement district where everyone on that street can share in the cost of developing and building a portion or. Some places source snow, snow at the west end of Garden Street. But that would be a more proportional way to approach the improvements that are needed on Garden Street. And the council, you're probably aware, you can force an L I D, the groups, the the property owners could. Petition for their own local improvement district and be signatories and share that cost. Two, I I brought it up earlier, but it's in the staff report under appeal basis four, and I just want to emphasize this. Under staff analysis. Title ten provides no standards for when waivers should be considered for construction standards. So that's what I was pointing out, I genuinely think staff. Probably wanted to work for a solution here, but they don't have standards, those standards are only. Provided to you and you the authority when you can waive these, so it's more of an intuitive decision, I suppose, but I would also point out that they've been waived historically. For unique properties in town, and then finally. You know, I just want to emphasize that Mr. Holland could probably go pull a building permit for a single family and A D U. In the next couple of weeks and effectively have two families living on on this lot. Which in his mind, our mind is no different than. Drawing a line and having two families, two structures on the lot, so. That's all we have, and thanks for your time and consideration.
Okay, that concludes the public hearing, so at this point, no new information may be provided and any questions may be directed. Only to city staff during deliberation. So counsel, the floor is yours, if you have any questions or or certainly we can deliberate at this point.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
And I mean, no disrespect to any council members or any of our staff, I obviously have full faith that they work hard and. I just want to be clear, because it's kind of been brought up in other situations like this, it doesn't matter the intent. Of whether he wants to make money for his kids, leaves it, leave it for his kids. Sell it for two million dollars because somebody wants to buy it for that, that's the country we live in. So ultimately, I just want to be clear, our decision should not be on what his intent is, whether for his family or kids. Mr. Walker, common sense is an interesting thing, because to me, a common sense decision could be something completely different. Than somebody else, but it doesn't make one more right than the other. Mr. Walker, you said something to the effect of. Maybe if he built ten properties, and this isn't, I'm just repeating what you said, where somebody might say, well, it may be more advantageous for Mr. Holland to build. X, Y, and Z, well, something I haven't really heard of, which could be a thing, is maybe he wants two separate properties because he wants to keep one and sell one. Of the other and still provide an opportunity for his kids to live here instead of building. Two houses, but it's still one property, and if he sells it, he has to sell both of them, where he may want to live. In one of them and sell the other and use that money to leave for his family in the future, ultimately, we don't know and ultimately doesn't. Matter, I think the the question here and I, and I always seem to fight for these situations is. Cities don't get things perfectly, we try really hard, we do the best we can, we're growing. We need more housing, we talk about it all the time, and I think these specific. Waivers are here for a reason, for us to use common sense, and it may be different across the board here, but I'm, my common sense says. This is something that is granted to us to waive. As an opportunity in a unique situation, a unique property where we can use quote unquote common sense to. I think that makes sense in this situation. What I'm hearing is there's a willingness to provide the need for a turnaround for the fire lane. So that makes sense. I don't, I guess maybe for staff, I don't fully understand this four-foot. That's going to turn into this really expensive project, so maybe that you could help me understand that better. Because I don't think that'd be very kind or right for one property to have to. Pay for all of that, so. That's just how my brain's thinking, so maybe. You can help me understand that four-foot easement or how it's. Or four-foot. Buffer, that's what I'm hearing is going to cost a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
The four-foot dedication would be in addition to the sixteen-foot right of way that currently exists. Which gives you a twenty-foot right of way, which is sufficient for fire apparatus access.
Amy, if you could pull up that that site plan or kind of quasi-site plan again. The map that with the red line. I think that would help explain your point.
So the four feet.
There was another one that had the the red line on the south end. I think that made the point pretty clear, or maybe you drew it in there, but there was a.
Yes, it's just.
I think it might have been Jeremy's slide.
No, it was.
Was it?
Okay, it's the one I asked, I asked a question.
Oh, okay.
Amy's presentation.
I'll recreate it on this one, so. The proposed plat is shown here. And they're showing a twenty-six-foot wide access easement to lot one across lot two. An easement isn't a legal right of way. So that does not create legal. Public access to lot two. So. Or lot one, sorry. To the south here, you see the the existing sixteen feet of right of way. With a four-foot dedication, getting rid of this access easement altogether. A four-foot dedication gives you the twenty feet of right of way. To both lots now, both lots have sufficient public. Right of way frontage. And then the improvement would be to get the fire apparatus to lot one, it within that public right of way.
And. What I'm hearing is they would have to pay for that to even apply for.
There's three, there's three separate categories, there's right-of-way dedication, that's the four feet, that's. There's. Structure improvement, so there's the improvement of the roadway, there's put down the asphalt. Create the roadway. And then third is the turnaround, which the turnaround sounds to have been conceded, so it's kind of not an issue tonight. But your two separate buckets are your four-foot dedication. And your improvement of the public right of way. The question is, well, they want both of those ways, that's what they're asking for. That's what's before you. You have a couple, a little bit of flexibility in there. To say you can defer, and this is what Councilman Walker was getting at. You can decide to defer the requirement for the improvement of the public right of way to the time of application of the building permit. To protect whatever scenario might be coming. Whether it's a single-family residence, whether it's a ten-unit multifamily which it's owned for. To protect whatever that lot might bring in the future, defer those right-of-way improvements to that way. But those are two separate buckets.
Understood. And maybe I'm just dense.
No.
So that's understandable, but what if? In the my, the the scenario that it keeps going in my mind is what if they want two separate properties to keep one to sell the other, that's where it seems like they would have to bear the. Cost. Of all of that. As opposed to spreading it where they'd have to pay for the sidewalks. Et cetera.
Possibly. That's what I said, it differs that decision until you know what's going to happen.
And. Okay, and that's my argument, I feel like that robs them from an opportunity to split the property, sell one, keep the other. That's just how my brain thinks and. I think there's a reason that we've got code where we're able to waive and. I guess use common sense doesn't mean we're all going to agree on what that is, so I'm just. Throwing that out there to spark conversations, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, if you mind, I guess we'll follow this common sense. Trail here, I I think this is my first time ever driving down Garden Street today. And pulling up on the Holland's property. It's already a non-conforming property, you've got buildings directly west into the southwest. That I sat in each of those parking lots, I had a heck of a time even backing up out of the Holland's property. As there was vehicles on the north and the south side of Garden Street. Abutting the Holland property and the property just south of it. And if. The appellant is already conceding having the turnaround. Doesn't it make the property that much better already? By plating this and getting the turnaround? At least in my my opinion, that street is very challenging as it is right now. With the cars parked on it, and I I feel like it would do good, I don't see any reason why Garden Street would continue. Through south, through the southwest of the property, the just south of the Holland property, north of the property, just south of that. You go into a parking lot there, I guess I'd have a question in terms of fire, can a fire truck come from Superior Street? And head south into the pain clinics parking lot to access this with enough turnaround as well? At least, I don't know, could we hear from Gavin as well, too?
How you doing? So the coming in from the from the south side where the parking lot is. You can get access basically to that south, that southwest corner, maybe that that western border. Of that what would be lot one. But there wouldn't be any access for us to actually take a truck through there, so we could get like as close to where that paved portion is. Then we're just pulling hand lines from that point. Um, then we're just pulling hand lines from that point over, uh, we call it hand jack and hose, taking it across whatever. You know, whatever part we couldn't get our truck to, if that was what you were asking.
And we're assuming that cars wouldn't be parked there, even if you could drive through there.
Cars are going to be parked there.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I just go with they're going to be parked there.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
And there's snow and you guys are hiking. You've got all your apparatus on and you're breaking the hose.
But, but, but how, how much range do you have? You know, like how far can you drag with the hose to get around of structure?
Uh, well, ideally you want to be able to get all the way around it. Um, it kind of depends on where the structure goes in that lot. Um, where we decide to spot the apparatus when we come in because. Where we spot the apparatus also depends on where the hydrant is, which hydrant we decide to catch. Um, provided the hydrants up and running, um, winter time, you know, you never know. Um, could be covered with snow. It really, it all just, I mean, scenario, you can play out a hundred different scenarios on how that would work. Ideally, you want to be able to get hose to every corner of that lot. Says no matter where they're going to build. Whether, whether it's one or, you know, five houses, it doesn't make it, it doesn't really make a difference to me. Uh, other than the fact that I need to try to be, I need to be able to get to all sides of it. That's it. I mean, we got plenty of hose, but it's, you know.
But could you do that from the parking lot to the west?
Yeah.
So you wouldn't need to come in off of Garden Street?
Uh, it depends on, again, it depends on which way we're coming from, which hydrant we catch. Um, the first truck may come down garden, the second truck may go to the parking lot. Depends on the size of the fire, the exposures, things like that. There, there is a multitude of variables that go into that.
We're asking like the fire guys, like can you do something? The answer is going to be, oh, yeah.
Yeah, we can do it. It's, it may not be the most efficient thing, but it may not, that may have been, they've that, um, coming in off that, off that parking lot, that might not be our first choice. Um, who knows if there's construction going on in the parking lot, you know, there's, if there're limit, if it limits our access. Um, that's why we work in concert with everyone else, um, even street closures, road repairs, things like that. Um, we, we need a detour. We need a plan B. So.
Go ahead. Mayor, so say deny tonight, he builds a house and, uh, A D U. As is, that'd be more difficult to get to. Hasn't, now, if there was a fire, then if we approved it saying, hey, if they're going to build a little turnaround for you guys. That seems a lot more, a lot better for you guys. If there was to houses not property, okay, kind of, I guess to.
Yeah.
Confirming.
Not a, yeah, that in a, even that picture that he showed earlier about the truck, you know, pulling in, doing the, trying to turn, turn around. Um, there, that's not, that's not normal practice. We don't like to do that because that's private property. We want to keep our trucks on the hardpan. Um, it's probably conversational I have with my folks, but we want to be stay on the asphalt unless the truck's designed to be off pavement. Um, where the Hollands are talking about doing the fire turnaround and doing the pavement. Um, it doesn't necessarily have to be pavement for us. It could be the, you know, the compaction with the reinforced soul. Uh, soil like the grading and stuff like that. I mean, they build runways out of that stuff. If it supports the fire truck, you know, that we're good with it as long as it's maintained and open. So, and it's a lot less expensive. So matter of fact, I think we're, we're considering doing some of that stuff with the Traverse Park, uh, project. So. Now, just to, just to meet code.
It's just, just to make sure that I have this correct. This, this already is challenging for a fire truck to come. As it sits right now with the current structure on the property. Whereas if we allowed this, if, if we, um. Overturn the appeal or the, uh, staff's decision. We'd have a turnaround. The appellate gets their short plat. And you have better access on a non, on a piece of property that's already non-conforming today.
I look at it as, uh, there's two, two different schools of thought on that. One, we, sometimes we have to be, you know, creative. We have to go outside the box, um, to think about how we're going to get into fire suppression. Um, but at the same time, uh, the code is what the code is. Um, so if the, you know, they, it's like, um. I li, I mean, to me, I liken it to, you know, uh, remodeling a house. Once you hit a certain point. You're good, but after that you have to bring the rest of the house up to code. It's not a, I'm going to, you know, just bring up a little bit and then pretend I don't see it. I mean, it's, they've already, they, for us on the far side, they've already agreed to put the, you know, to put the turnaround in. Um, I think, I think where you guys come in is actually the, the rest of it.
One last question, where, where is the hydrant on the street?
I don't know. I'd have to, I'd have, I'd have to look at the map. Have to look at the map. There should be one, uh, there should be one at the, towards the head of Garden Street and there's probably another one over there on division.
Thank you.
For the, for the record, is the size and scale of the turnaround different? If the application for a building permit is a single family residence versus a ten unit multifamily residence?
No, that's, it's the same.
It's just for council.
Yeah, it's the same.
Thank you, Gavin.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'd like to hear, so I, I don't understand this, uh. The waivers, like, could you legally speak to the waivers that Mr. Grimm has said that we have? That we can do because I don't.
Your, your code gives you authority to waive. Requirements that are within your own code.
And we have rules for a reason. Like that's where this, I, I hear you. But like, we have rules, we should abide by those rules.
But there's rules, then there's.
Fonda, maybe it'd be helpful, um, does staff know if there are other examples of waivers that have, um. Similar situations across the city?
You, you are the only ones that can grant them and they haven't come to you. So if they've happened before.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Uh, Councilmember, I didn't, I didn't mean that in a disrespectful way. We're not, we're humans and government's made up of humans. We're not perfect. I know we do a good job, but I think these are here because there's situations like this where. We're given the task and responsibility to make things, these are uncomfortable situations. You know, you have. Chief administrator saying no, and then an appeal for a reason for us to say maybe. In a multitude of counselors, we can come up with a better solution, not because one's not capable, it's. More questions are asked, life, life is, moves on and we're able to discuss this and so I just want you to know I'm in the.
See that and I raise you, I'm concerned about the neighborhood. I'm concerned about the neighbors and I want to make sure that we. Don't add to an already problematic street.
Right, we're, we're on seeing this actually improves that neighborhood personally. But absolutely.
Okay, um, my comment was, um. I'd just like to make sure that it, there's a permanent dedication. I think the additional four feet. Makes sense. Um, and then if we look at this deeper, my question to staff would be. When the building permits come in, no matter who owns this property at that point. Then would we have an opportunity to decide? What type of infrastructure would be required? Would we have another shot way down the road to determine who's going to pay for that infrastructure upgrade?
Yes, I've played yourself. Yes, because if you decide to defer the improvements under a different improvement agreement that gets recorded against the property. That could always come back to you for an amendment. So you would just, you put in the code requirements now. But at the point of building application, if the applicant, whether it's Mr. Holland or someone he sells to. Um, not that he's going to, just it might not be him.
Right.
Whoever comes forward with the building permit could also make a request to amend the firm improvement agreement.
Okay, and so, um. At that time, we would have more information to go on whether it was going to be single houses or. Um, multi-unit housing. And then at that time, we could make a more educated decision on. What type of infrastructure and road width we thought was important at that point.
You'd have your twenty feet if you require the four foot dedication.
Right, and so that's a critical piece. In my mind of whatever the long range plan for this piece of property is. And then the, um. The specs for the fire turnaround could also come in at that point because that's at an absolute already. And so that can be determined based upon whatever goes on that property. And then it would be that. Developer or landowner or whomever that is that would have to bear the costs of whatever the council thought was appropriate at that time.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Um, Amy, so on the twenty-six foot easement, that does not constitute that it's a flagpole lot.
Right, it, it doesn't create. Public frontage.
Okay, correct.
Or lot one.
Okay. And I concur with Councilwoman Rule about the four foot right of way. I think that's important.
Mr. Mayor. Yeah, and I'm, I'm just going to come back to the. Opening statements of Mr. Holland about applying common sense here and it, it seems to me like the short plat as he's requesting it. Common sense says that's going to create a situation in which you're stuck with two non-conforming lots. Not sellable to any developer in the future, going against your letter saying that you'd like the, uh. You know, the most flexible and advisable asset distribution for your heirs. Uh, the, the easement does not create a public right of way, but it does. Eh, eh, in, entail a two thousand and four square foot. Exaction on yourself. Basically, you're dedicating two thousand square feet of lot two. For a right of way, an unofficial right of way for the owner, whoever that is of lot one versus the city's request for a six hundred and twenty square foot. Dedication of right of way. So you're, you're voluntarily offering over four times. Oh, sorry, over three times and of, of land for an easement for whoever builds on lot one. As opposed to a six hundred and twenty foot. Square foot dedication of a four foot right of way, which represents a tiny, tiny percentage of the total parcel size, which then. For that dedication of four, four feet, you have now two conforming lots on which. Up to ten multifamily units could be built vastly increasing your property value. And you're not being asked to pave or put curbs. And by the way, the idea that owners of lots that have deficiencies, existing deficiencies. Aren't also asked to do those things. Anybody who pulls a building permit in Sandpoint has to put a sidewalk in. This is not an unfair exaction. On you, any, uh, if, if, but if we make this exemption for Mr. Holland, we're going to start to see variance requests come in. Every month for people asking not to have to do the improvements that they're required to do when they want to build on their property in Sandpoint. So I think this is, I mean, common sense says you, you'll win by, by giving this four foot. Dedication of right of way. No additional cost will be imposed on you at this time, says right here. Uh, only at the time of a building permit application, your property value goes through the roof because you know how, you know, have two conforming lots. That could be sold to a developer and then the developer who might want to build on that in the future, if it's not you. Um. Will bear the cost of those infrastructure improvements. So, I don't know. Common sense. But. Any other thoughts? Are you ready to enter the motion?
And I, I'm going to hear from, I'm going to let you all, you all have, uh, proposed motions before you and I'm going to let you, uh. Do that.
And, and at this time, Mr. Mayor, um, there's no rebuttal from the Hollands, is that correct? It's.
Yeah.
Yeah, just want to make sure, make it clear. Yeah, well. When we went through the whole sidewalk situation, I was never a fan, I think. Cities should always be responsible for the sidewalks. That was my opinion and of course I lost, but so that's not. Um, Mr. Walker, I think you're making a lot of sense, common sense, and I'm not against that, but I also think. Um, just where my convictions have always been. That I, I don't have a problem with. Them dedicating and making a turnaround because I think the problem would be if they are the ones that want to develop. If we do allow this, then they're going to have to bear the, the, the cost of it and that is a lot of money and. I think this leaves an opportunity to have housing that we talked about and us do the right thing and not. Having to have it subsidized in any way, but just. Let them build. So it's not very sophisticated. I just. Um, I'm for approving it, so.
Counsel, it's on you to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to deny his presented clarification on required modifications and timing of improvements.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? So be a roll call vote.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
No.
Counselor Sprow?
No.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Grove?
Yes.
Okay, and the, uh, motion is approved, the. Uh, administrative decision is denied, I'm sorry, is upheld. The application is denied. And, um. That is, to be clear. Uh, that would include a dedication of a additional four feet of right of way north of the existing sixteen foot right of way to be incorporated into final plat. Determination of a turnaround size and location at time of building permit application. And public improvements or fee and lieu may be deferred until building permit. Phase, if noted on the plat or memorialized through a deferred public improvement agreement. So those are the conditions for the city in order to approve the. The split. And that is the council's decision. Uh, the next item under old business is an update on the Little Sand Creek Watershed Recreation Plan. I'll now yield the Florida Parks and Planning and Development Manager Maeve Nevin's lap. Love that background.
The beautiful Salt Lake City, Utah.
Representing Sandpoint back there.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, commissioners. We're. Mr. Mayor, um, tonight we are very excited once again to bring another project forward and I've got. I'm Betsy Byrne with me from the National Park Service River Trails and Conservation Association and we are, um. Wrapping up the final hours of the Little Sand Creek Watershed Recreation Master Plan. Um, as you know, we've been working on this for, since June of last year. It was identified in your strategic plan. To have this plan completed and, um, the timeline that we're operating on is that we're introducing it tonight. We will have it on, available on our website with a, uh, option to be able to provide commentary. Um, by the end of this week and, um, it will be out for public comment until I think the twenty ninth. Is what we're looking at. And then, um, that gives us a couple of days to turn around comments and pending. Anything drastic, we should be able to turn around the feedback and then we'll be back on June seventh for. Um, hopefully, uh, an adoption at that point. Um, so with that, I'm going to ask Betsy to share the screen, please. And there's some highlights that we want to. Mention and Betsy and I are going to piggyback each other here, but I just want to call out some really, uh. Important items that I think to call to your attention as you're reviewing this. Um, first of all, as you may recall, we worked with the International Mountain Bike Association, the, um, Trail Solutions Group. And, um, there is an entire appendix to this, which is inclusive of the trails plan. That has been vetted through the community and the stakeholders already. So I think we've got that pretty well wrapped up yet. And here you can see. Um, and then Betsy's going to jump back over to the introduction and. Kind of go through that. Let's see here. Okay. Oh, there we go. Perfect. Um, so we have a lot of content in here and I just want to remind everyone that this is a. High level master plan and we have several calls to action or action items for future work because we, we were. We needed more data, um, and, um, the same goes for the trails. And when you're thinking about the trail planning, while there are concept lines on a plan, they are concept only. And that doesn't mean that it's a blueprint to go and. Develop those. So I wanted to say that out loud because there's another step between building and the step we're in right now. And that concept would then go into a design where people would go into the field and, um, design. Um, based on the actual conditions. And they did have several field visits, but it wasn't, um, that wasn't the task. That's a whole other. Task assignment. So we are at that still that thirty thousand scale but level. Um, but what we did, um, was break the project out into various zones and we've landed on, um. A trail plan that is about approximately fifty miles of additional trails. With the majority of which be, being located in the lower basin. Um, in the lower basin. And the lower basin is, it has the switchback two at the bottom. And then from there, you have several switchbacks that go up, but the main access points have been identified, you can see on the map up here. And the existing trails are predominantly within the lower basin. So that's just where you're gonna see the majority of the trail improvements, the realignment and the future. We did look at existing trails and other areas as well as from Switchback Three. And that includes the access road for timber harvesting. And we have, for the most part, made recommendations that no recreation development should occur along the creek. We are leading this plan from the original Little Sand Creek Watershed Management Plan goals. And that number one goal is to protect the water. And through all of our public process, we heard that over and over again, the community values clean water and protecting it. And so it has been a continuation throughout this entire plan to lead from that perspective. With that, I wanna call to your attention, we had a pretty monumental effort to bring together various entities. There are, there's over eight thousand acres of land in the watershed, as you know. The city is the majority landowner, but we have Schweitzer at the very top. We have the Bureau of Land Management, which is a federal agency. We have the U.S. Forest Service, another federal agency, and the Idaho Department of Lands. Those are our major landowners, and you can see the blue here is our property. Why is this monumental, and why am I bringing this to your attention? It's because during the initial processes, we've been able to get all of those people, those entities in the room. And we've continued to maintain relationships with them. So one of our calls to action is a recommendation to develop a cooperative agreement. I'm fortunate to be part of the Selkirk Noxious Weed Cooperative Agreement. And that is a very good example that we actually reference in here of how different federal agencies and local agencies and various other entities can come together in a non-financial binding agreement over a series of several years so that there isn't a hang-up in a bureaucratic process of getting an agreement done. That agreement should be a certain length of time that would allow for that year-long process to get all the signatures. So, so we are, we are making recommendations and calls to actions to explore other cooperative agreements like that for the purposes of moving forward with recreation management and natural resource management and conservation efforts as an entire body instead of just one landowner here and one over there. And that will help unify and strengthen and also create a better asset and better protection. Some other items that I wanna bring to your attention are, we have an education section that we had an advisory group of local educators. We worked with the University of Idaho, the Lake Pontaria School District, as well as other professional educators in the community. And we have recommendations for that. We have a robust entry-level one-on-one friendship building effort happening with the Kalispel Tribe, but also other indigenous tribes as well. And throughout the entire document, we talk about the history from an indigenous perspective, and we talk about the land stewardship from indigenous perspective, and we have another action item, making recommendations to look towards the future. But by looking towards the past from an indigenous-led conservation effort. So these are very high-level, and I'm trying to be quick here. I wanna give Betsy the rest of the time. And just make sure that you are aware of the two separate plans, but that the trail plan is integrated into this whole big rec plan. And so some of the information is overlapping and repeated, but the rec plan is encompassing of the whole thing. And one other thing I wanna highlight, the maps, one of the feedbacks we heard, it was hard to read them. They do enlarge up to thirty-six by forty-two inches. And there is going to be an appendix of just the map, so you could blow them up huge if you want. You can zoom in on your computer screen. And then finally, I just wanna, before I hand it to Betsy, remind you that this document that we're coming forward to with is the hard copy PDF, the goal of this is to develop basically the book version and immediately proceed in the June seventh council meeting, pending any challenges there or issues. We intend to immediately, the very next week, roll into our, our data collection and our kickoff, the iDrone camp that we had mentioned where we're collaborating with local educators. And there's actually an event happening on the fifteenth, and we'll share information about that when we share this plan. But if any of you want to participate in that, you'll hear the students presenting their projects that are based on the watershed and using the watershed as a classroom. So through this planning effort, and in only nine months, I just want to give a huge thanks and props to Betsy. Betsy has been my left, right, everything hand. We've been working so hard, and I feel like, Betsy, you guys get to see me. But Betsy behind the scenes has truly written and pulled this whole document together in a way that I can't even begin to express my gratitude. And also Leah, she's with Emma, she's not on tonight, but the same thing. And I think we were talking to Leah at like one-thirty in the morning last night. So this has been ongoing every day for about the last two months. We check in all the time, they travel, they work all over the place, and we've been able to coordinate in a remote fashion as well as provide service to our stakeholders. We've maintained relationships through this whole time since kicking this project off in a remote fashion. And Betsy will be here, as well as Leah will be here that second week of June. And as I said, we're gonna roll into an immediate action item at that point. And we are so lucky, we're gonna have Betsy to continue on for the foreseeable future while we take this project from a document, a planning document, that's a book into something called the ArcGIS Story Map. And that will become the, sort of the palatable, marketable piece that you can zoom in on your computer screen, and you can see what's going on, and that's a real friendly piece. And why is that so important? And that's because we are now elevating the city's project and the city's parcel to one unified Lakes, Little Sand Creek Watershed with our federal partners and our state partners. And that document is gonna help unlock major funding that we need to see this plan implemented. And hopefully eventually get a staff person in there to help manage it as well. So we have great big dreams, of course, we're dreamers, but they are grounded in reality, they're grounded in data, they're grounded in our history. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Betsy, and thank you very much, Betsy.
Maybe, you've already done a great job of kind of giving the overview. I do wanna just like acknowledge that we couldn't do this plan without the input and the feedback and the information that we've gathered from folks over the last year. We've had, I think there's some folks probably in this room who have been heavily involved in helping us craft some of the recommendations and ideas in this plan. We, you know, there were some great public open houses last fall. I, I keep telling my coworkers about the open house at Matchwood Brewery, because it was one of the better public meetings I've been to since being on this job. So thanks to everybody for, for providing your information as we go along. And I really just wanna, you know, reiterate what Maeve said, that, you know, this, this really is high-level. This is a jumping-off point, there are lots of action items in here that we can, after this is adopted, we can dig in and start tackling some of these, these pieces, ever where from the, you know, the trail, getting the trails built to, you know, exploring opportunities to have place-based learning take place in the watershed to, you know, tackling noxious weeds. So there's, there's a lot of good meat in this plan. And I'm excited to share it with all of you guys and get your feedback on, on this rec plan in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, one other thing, because Heather would not be happy if I didn't mention it. We do have a pretty well-written section about incorporating placemaking, arts, culture, historical references. So there's just, you know, we were able to work as a team and leverage all of our in-house resources and our external partners. And I just, it's, it's something that I think we've done a really good job, you know. Yeah, the e-bikes, that's a perfect one. We essentially provided the framework. It's, it's gonna be easy, as I'm typically an implementer of master plans, and I, you know, having been a part of this, I think we'll be able to implement this. So, yeah. With that, any questions?
Great job.
Yeah, it's exciting.
If you don't mind, can I just make one comment? And I'm sorry, you know, we're not voting anything tonight, I'm allowed to speak. I just wanna say like, this, I think is, this is so important for our community. And I mean, I absolutely love what we're doing at Traverse Park, I love the vision for city beach and the, and the and the Sand Creek downtown revitalization, all that. But I think what makes Sandpoint truly unique is our geography and our, our location relative to this beautiful, you know, basin, just two and a half miles from downtown. And how unique also that the city owns property in that, that is like, you guys don't even know, that is so unusual for a city to own thousands of acres of beautiful forest and hillside. So like, the fact that we've had the support of Jennifer and the mayor, especially the mayor, ten years ago, he inspired the vision of the watershed crest trail. I mean, that was like the foundation that led to where we are today. Deb, having, you know, served eight years on council, I know this is your big dream to have this plan adopted before, before your term is up. So thank you for Jennifer, for bringing Maeve on, and Maeve and Betsy for just being part of this. I mean, I, I won't be voting when you guys vote on June seventh, because we're one of the key stakeholders that's gonna participate in this project. But this is probably the only chance I'll get to really speak in favor of it and just thank the city for, for what's gone into it. And this is, again, like, I just heard somebody say this in a workshop I was at last week. The hardest part of getting trails built is getting the planning done. From now, it's, it's gonna be money and literally like sweat and dirt and, you know, sore muscles. But that, that'll come, just getting this plan through is like so important for our city, because I think this is going to bring, we talk about, you know, tennis and pickleball and lacrosse and soccer. We know from the study that Tate Commissioned in twenty-seventeen with twenty-eighteen that trail systems bring in millions of dollars of revenue to communities as well. But more importantly, they're gonna improve the quality of life for people who live here, it's about locals first. And, you know, a trail is a free amenity, once it's there, there's never gonna be a, an admission fee. You don't need a season's pass that costs nine hundred dollars, by the way, buyers before the end of May, if you're planning next year. This is good, once these trails are built there for everybody. And it's just super exciting to be here at this point in our, in our history, so thank you.
Jason, I had a feeling you were in support of this project.
Again, like, I, I won't be voting on June seventh, so I had to say something now that we're just, you know, sharing the update.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I'm giving you a standing ovation. Good work, that's all I had for you.
Mr. Mayor, just a big, big thanks to Betsy for sticking out as long as tonight has been. I have no idea what time zone you're in, but really appreciate you being awake and hanging out, so thank you.
For you guys, you bet.
We owe you beers at Matchwood.
Thanks, Betsy, appreciate it. And thank you, Maeve. All right, for the next item under, oh, I'm sorry, are there any members from the public that would like to comment?
Okay, I see one, okay. He's gotta slip.
I'm Kyle Schreiber, Sandpoint resident, and just first off, I wanna say great work on this, I love every part of it. The only piece of feedback I have, I don't know if you can pull up that map again, but there is a part of Sandpoint land that touches the top of the watershed where it crests over into Schweitzer. And as I've looked where it's platted right now, Schweitzer has platted for a neighborhood there. Right now, there is the ability to defend an easement where you could access that land from the Schweitzer side. And that neighborhood has not been built yet, but I can only imagine that it's gonna get more difficult if it does get built to defend that easement. So it's just something to consider in the master planning, that's my only comment, and otherwise, great job.
That's great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiber, appreciate that. Ben Mclerk? Oh, we got another one.
Yeah, another hang.
Late-night crowd.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. For the record, I'm Chase Youngdoll. I am a resident of the city of Sandpoint, however, I'm here in my work capacity as the Noxious Weeds Program Manager for Bonner County and the Chairman of the Selkirk Cooperative Weed Management Area. And I'd just like to recognize Maeve for the work she's done on incorporating a noxious weeds component into this watershed plan. Since she's taken over as the, the Noxious Weeds Management Liaison for the city of Sandpoint, she's kept the lines of communication open. She's sought my input on invasives of concern and control recommendations. And I know that noxious weeds is something that's, it's not the sexiest topic, it's something that can be brushed aside. It is something that only impacts agriculture, but they do impact natural resources all, all the same. And the entire watershed, all the way up to the crest, I think we can agree, that's a, a natural resource gem that should be protected. And, and I'm looking forward to continuing my work with Maeve, be it with education and awareness with noxious weeds and with, with mitigation. So with that, appreciate the time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Youngdoll, appreciate those comments. Ben Mclerk, anyone else?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, the next item under old business, council will consider renewing the watershed license agreement with Pontaria Peddlers. And now, now you have the floor once again to Maeve.
And there's that. Um, I don't have a presentation for you in your pocket, but I have a story about when I got here and working with the peddlers. And when we first started, I think I probably scared him with all of my various inspection routines and some red tape and risk. And the biggest thing that I saw happen was you had a group of people that I've never met show up on a trail and welcome me. And I wanna say thank you to them, because they've become my friend family here. And they welcomed my entire family and even got my mom on an e-bike. So first of all, thank you for that, but they also listened to me when I did the inspections. And when we hit them with this license agreement a year ago, it was, it was, it's way better now. But it was the best that I knew how to do at the time with the resources. And it, it, it called to action one particular item that I think as a community in one year should be so proud of, and that is the emergency signage program that they implemented. And it was the peddler, the Pontaria Peddlers and Jason particularly, who led the charge, not just up here, but in all of the trail systems that they manage and they take care of. And that emergency system, what it is, is, it's a simple sign. If you come to a trailhead, there's a cross, and it has a letter and a number. And a letter is associated with what trail you're on, and the number is associated with what intersection, whether you're at the beginning or an incremental intersection. And there's a system for that everywhere, and that system speaks to the GIS or the GPS coordinates that the emergency responders get. And that has actually helped save people from having worse injuries. I don't know yet that we've had any life-saving incidents here. I know we had it in Alaska, so I think that we will prevent them in the future. There's a second part to that, the second part is that they are required in this license agreement to also provide tours and keep the access open. And so since they had to do this, they had to upgrade some of the bridges so that they could get first responders into the watershed. And, and they did it, and they didn't have the money obligated for it initially. So once again, you know, I've been asking and pushing and asking and pushing and trying really hard to get these standards up to a level that I can buy off on a risk. And at the fundamental level, I felt heard, respected, and they, they did it, and they, they did it quickly. And I'm just really grateful for that community. And so you, as a body, have supported me as well, and certainly Jennifer and the entire team behind me has helped. It's not just me, and I wanna say this over and over again, there's a city behind the face. And that city behind the face are the people that are making these agreements happen, and they're working super late hours as well. And they're doing incredible work, but the language is so technical, and my mind does not always pick up on everything. They, they get the language, they do the PR, they do so much for us, they support our meetings so that we can make these initiatives happen, and we can help realize your strategic planning goals. So this is the So this is the second license now, and I think it's, it's even better than last year because this year we were able to include Imba's recommendations. Um and I think we're really moving in um a much more efficient fashion now. We've already been given um a, a plan for maintenance for the summer and they're already up there working away. So, you know, again, we're not missing a beat and um I'm just so grateful for that. So I want to just call that to your attention and be available for any questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Um I just have a comment. I know that when, I think it was last year, that one of my concerns was the social trails or whatever you all call them. Um because a friend of mine, her son went on a social trail, the trail gave way and he died. And so I really appreciate that. And my iPad died, so I don't remember if it's appendix F or whatever that you really made mention of that you're going to either correct those or you're going to get rid of them. And so I just want to say I really appreciate that for anybody else there who might be hurt on a trail that isn't an official trail. So thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. There's actually something to say about that. So um when trails aren't adopted in a plan, they don't get GPSed. And they don't have maintenance and there's no inspections on them. And that's why it's important to sign it as such that you are now leaving XYZ trail system or you have now crossed over a managed line, managed trail line. So that, you know, that person is aware. And anything that we can do to prevent that, there's design techniques that we can do. So if you have a social trail that comes off of a main, main trail, um you know, they, they do lay down the vegetation and try to re-vegetate it. Um there's a whole bunch of things you can do from a design perspective, but the signage as well. So and then also just having eyes on it regularly. Um I try to get out there as much as I can and have, you know, the city's eyes on it. But I am using the volunteer group as my eyes and ears as well. And we have a great relationship. And if we didn't have that great relationship, it wouldn't be so strong. Um that I've worked in other places with, I've worked with several bike groups actually. And um it, it's the ones where you can talk to them all the time. And that's when you find out if there's an issue somewhere, if there was an animal kill. And then you're immediately getting the response up to the community. So again, it goes back to strong, strong commitments to communication. It's not necessarily about the dollars or anything like that. It's really about a commitment to um group, family-oriented management. That's not my technical term.
Okay. Counsel, any questions?
No questions. Acknowledgement to the sixteen hundred volunteer hours and the almost nearly four miles of new trail. That's a lot of blood, sweat and tears up there. And that's, those volunteer hours saves ju- it saves that much money, like the, I, I don't know what the equivalence to what that cost would be.
Thirty dollars.
Because the, that partnership, twenty-nine sixty-five, that times sixteen hundred that we didn't have to pay for. So deeply thank all the volunteers, all the hard work, sweat, labor, all that stuff.
Yeah. Okay. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this matter?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution renewing the watershed license agreement with Pondray Peddlers. Is there a motion? Uh city agreement number A twenty-three dash fifty-one hundred dash one?
Don't move.
Okay.
Been moved and seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Groot?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to also acknowledge the fact that uh Counselor Walker, Walker stepped away and has recused himself from this vote.
Thank you. Motion passes. And Mr. Walker will now return. The final item under Old Business is counsel consideration of a new negotiated memorandum of a, of understanding with the Independent Highway District. I'll now use the Florida City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Been a long marathon night and we could talk a lot about um this agreement and the history behind this. And um but I'm going to be brief. Uh and if you have questions, then we can go there if we need to. Um this is a renewal agreement with Independent Highway District um that spells out revenue sharing and um shared responsibilities and specific responsibilities between the city of Sandpoint and Independent Highway District for um maintenance of uh the city streets. Uh there was a court case about this that went a lot in the, in the court system for quite some time up to the Supreme Court. Um where um regarding ownership of the city streets and responsibilities at the end of that court case, um which was in about two thousand and, about two thousand and sixteen. I think it was about time I um I joined the city. Um it basically coming out of that, we needed to enter into a memorandum of understanding that spelled out the agreements between the two different So we did enter into an MOU between the city and Independent Highway District in two thousand and sixteen. This is an updated M- MOU with really most of the changes are um around um shared responsibility and really cleaning up responsibilities between the two entities uh in, at which is in appendix A. Um we had significantly more items um under joint responsibility that would be activities that the city is doing relative to maintenance and planning for our streets and infrastructure. And then needing to go to Highway District for approval. So that has been significantly simplified in this new agreement. Um our revenue sharing, we went back quite a bit um back and forth relative to our revenue sharing. So there is funding that comes through the county for maintenance of the city streets. Fifty percent of that funding goes directly to the city and we use it for maintenance improvements on our city streets. The other statutory fifty percent goes to Independent Highway District. And this is from property taxes. And then because the city has taken on the responsibility for all of the maintenance of the streets, that's what some of this revenue sharing in, and really this re- this responsibility diagram is about is what responsibilities the city has taken on, how we have to work with Independent Highway District. And then how much of the revenues they're going to pass through to the city for us taking on all of the responsibility for maintenance of the streets. Our prior agreement um had the same revenue sharing terms relative to sharing back that statutory fifty percent as what we were able to negotiate in this MOU. Um the Highway District is willing to share back to the city ninety percent of their fifty percent of the property taxes for street maintenance within city limits. But the argument that they're a district and they're serving a larger area, therefore they can pool resources for multiple entities. And the city also ben- benefits from investments that might be made on Schweitzer, the road up to Schweitzer, for example, or other areas surrounding the city um that they um they maintain. Uh I did uh have a number of discussions back and forth with them about increasing um that revenue sharing back to the city um to a ninety-five percent is what I had asked Independent Highway District for, because when we negotiated this in two thousand and sixteen, their big argument was they needed ten percent of the fifty percent um for improvements to uh Schweitzer Mountain Road. So there, that was about the time that a couple of years later, all of the significant improvements were made to uh to the road. So this time, when it came back, I argued that your project was done. And therefore, we need equip upgrades to our equipment for maintaining streets. We have more streets. Um and um we uh should get a larger share than ninety percent. They are not willing to um to negotiate anything above the, the ninety percent. So um that's where we landed uh with this agreement. I talked with Andy before this was coming back to council about what grounds, um how much do we want to push this? Um at this point, we could take ourselves down a long road, back and forth with Highway District if we uh wanted to um push this further. However, I did get a provision in this agreement um that we did not have in the last. Um however, we had operated with this when a couple of instances came up. And I could just got to find what page it's on. Um here we go. It is here um under section C. Um when we have a situation where a public hea- we were holding a public hearing for a vacation um of a public right-of-way located within city of Sandpoint limits. So this came up. Uh Counselor Rule, you were on council at the time. I don't know that we had the rest of you. There was a vacation that we had that was in South Sandpoint um near the river. Um that was, it had already been partially vacated. And then there was the rest that a neighborhood wanted to have vacated. And we held a joint hearing between the city and Independent Highway District. And uh we determined a value of that property that they were requesting to be vacated. Interestingly enough, we, the city, don't have the statutory authority to assess a cost for a vacated property, however, Independent Highway District does. So in that case, we uh calculated a value. Independent Highway District agreed with us on what that value is. The fees were collected when the vacation ultimately was approved. They were remitted to Independent Highway District, who then in turn um passed through those revenues to city of Sandpoint for right-of-way um maintenance and improvements that we're doing in the city. Um so rather than um not have that in writing anywhere, and we may see a couple of vacations here uh in the next six to nine months. Uh I did get that provision, that revenue sharing provision written into the agreement on the basis that this is what we have done in the past. And if I'm not here and they, the same commissioners aren't there, we should have this revenue sharing uh um portion included in our agreement. So this is new relative to revenue sharing from what we had in the past. But otherwise, the revenue sharing stays at the ninety percent of their fifty percent. Uh there are um a couple of issues relative to um the right-of-way and Independent Highway District and um uh responsibilities of the city that remain questions that were not part of the court case and asked. And I have asked Andy um to look into some of those questions. So we'll probably be back to council um with an update on a few of those issues in the future. Um but at this point, my recommendation is that uh council approves this agreement as presented. Uh I just got a few minor changes from Independent Highway District that didn't come into me until after four o'clock this afternoon. And I was at the park filling in for Maeve and ran here right before the meeting started. So uh I had Melissa edit the resolution to reflect uh if council does approve this, to approve it with uh final review by the city attorney. So we have a chance to go through any of those changes. But in terms of the revenue sharing, in terms of overall responsibilities um for the city that would bring any additional costs, there weren't any changes in this agreement that they had proposed back.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? Okay. Madam Clerk, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, hearing that, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the member standing with the Independent Highway District. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Groot?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Uh that concludes our regular agenda. The final item on the agenda is an executive session. I'll entertain a motion to convene an executive session pursuant to Idaho Code Section seventy-four dash two oh six one D to consider the evaluation dismissal or disciplining of or to hear complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member or individual agent. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Broken.
It's been moved and seconded. Um we will take a brief break and give the room a chance to clear out. And then we will convene in an executive session and we'll
can vote on this?
Oh, sorry. It's been moved and seconded. Uh this will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Groot?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Okay, we will convene here in just a moment. Uh thank you, members of the public. And thank you, staff, for a long evening.
Easy, easy with the yawns.